I'd like to welcome everybody to the Planning and Zoning Commission Meeting of the City of Leon Valley on this Tuesday, March 12th. It is 6:34 PM, and we do have a full quorum. Eric, whose last name currently left me right when I said his first name. Mada, thank you, is excused this evening. We've not heard from Mr. Thomas Dillig. Would someone like to start us with the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to their public for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Hurrah.
Okay, that takes us to item 2.1, Approval of the Minutes from February 27th. Did anybody find an issue with those? Did anybody look at those? If nobody saw anything, I'll accept a motion.
I move that we adopt the minutes as they've been presented.
Oh, I'll make sure we're speaking into our mics.
I move that we adopt the minutes as they've been presented.
I second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to accept the minutes. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that's unanimous. That brings us to the new business. We do have a change on the order of that, so we will be taking item 3.2 first. That is a presentation, public hearing, discussion, and possible recommendation on request to rezone approximately six acres of land from R1 single-family dwelling zoning district to a planned development district, being parcel 46 abstract, lots of other legal language, located at 7201 and 7205 Heebner Road, Leon Valley, and our person. You have an official title.
Yes, I do. So I'm Crystal, I'm the city manager for the City of Leon Valley. We've had a lot of different calls with the city, and so I just wanted to make sure that everybody is on the same page with tonight's agenda items. Tonight's agenda, both agenda items are rezoning cases, not variance cases. And so if y'all are approving the zoning for either of the cases tonight, you can certainly approve the zoning for the rezone for either of the cases, or you can approve the zone with recommendations to their plans if you see fit. If you're denying the cases for whatever reason, your denial should be based on either it does, it's not in line with the PDD ordinance, it impacts health, safety, and welfare, it's not compatible with the section of the master plan, it could even have a public impact, which could include roads. So if you have an issue with any of those, you can deny the case based on those parameters. That should be the parameters if you're denying either of the cases this evening. So you should be in that realm of discussion. So I just wanted to make that very clear this evening, as you're going through both of these, that these are rezoning cases, not variance cases. Thank you.
Thank you, Crystal. Okay, and just to remind everybody, this is, sorry, wait, I thought we were taking, were we taking Mr. Shawdy's first?
We can, it's, that's up to you.
Are we? Because I thought you said that was the one we were taking first.
Okay.
Because that was already written first on my agenda.
Okay, yes.
Is that one, the one we're taking first?
Yes.
Is he the one that's running late?
Mr. Shawdy is running late, but I do have Mr. Thompson here with Texas Homes.
Okay, that one won't take very long, will it? Okay, yeah, let's do that one first.
Okay, so, good evening, Commissioners. Tonight, we're conducting a public hearing to make a recommendation on a request to rezone approximately 27 acres. This is our second public hearing on this case. The applicant is wanting to rezone from R1 to a planned development district with R6 garden home as their base zoning district. So here's a little bit of the history. Back in 1971, it was annexed throughout the years, from 1984 to 2011, several attempts for, to rezone this property, and they were denied. So the applicant is asking for a change of, on one of the R6 requirements, and that is for 45-foot frontage to 40. Otherwise, the lot still meets the code by 4,500 square foot. Later on, when this does go to council, he will be asking for a variance for the tree preservation code, but for our code and our zoning code, he is changing his plans from one tree per lot to two. So with the fire code, he is asking that the city grant him an easement at 6530 Samaritan.
All right, this is the wrong presentation if we're looking at the one on Heebner first.
This is Samaritan, with Mr. Thompson.
Maybe we need to wait for Mr. Shawdy.
Yeah.
The property owner and applicant.
Yeah, I said we were looking at the, I read in 3.2, which is the one on Heebner.
It's up to you.
Yeah, the one on Heebner.
Okay.
Yeah, 3.2.
All right, let's start over. Just a minute to switch.
Yeah.
Got it? Hmm? Okay. So this one is at 7201 and 7205 Heebner. This is with Century Communities. It was known as Post Landing, Phase 1 and Phase 2, and now it is Seneca Phase 1. Is that correct? Mr. Menus?
I'm here.
Okay, thank you. So this is a request to rezone approximately six acres on Heebner Road from an R1 single-family dwelling to the planned development district with an R6 garden home base zoning. The property will have to be platted and conform to all the stormwater regulations prior to any building permits being issued. So the background on this property was the parcels were owned and occupied prior to the city being incorporated by the Post family. It is adjacent to an acre subdivision, which was known as former Post Landing. They did have some problems meeting the fire code for a secondary entrance, and so they did purchase this property next door. So the master plan on Heebner Road corridor, 5cc, states that the land use in this area encourages all vacant areas located on the east side of Heebner Road to be zoned R1, but it also in the code, it states that the Planning and Zoning Commission and City Council can initiate zone changes. The developer is planning to match the Phase 1 of Post Landing that was approved. It's 49 lots, and the traffic impact analysis indicates 49 peak hour trips. Here's your site plan, it shows right here the 49 lots. 12 letters were sent out. We did not receive any in favor or opposed, but we did get back one that was undeliverable. So all fees associated with this rezoning case has been paid, and as for the fiscal impact, it will increase ad valorem and sales tax in the city. We do have a representative here from Texas Homes and staff is recommending approval. Thank you. Any questions?
Does anybody have questions for Ms. Teague or the applicant's representative before I open the public hearing? Or does the representative feel they have something important to say before we open the public hearing?
I'll be available for you.
Okay. Mr. Blackmore.
Can you step forward, sir? What exactly are you asking for? Because I thought we've gone through this in the past.
Yes, we're, we're asking for rezoning. The property's currently zoned R1, so it's just a homestead right now. We're trying to make it an extension to the current development that, that's under construction right now. But we're planning on expanding the neighborhood. It's right next to an elementary school.
Exactly.
So it's a really good land use, really compatible.
You have an entryway and an exitway out there?
Yes, yes. It, it will interconnect to the adjacent neighborhood, so it's going to have the connectivity, it's going to really help out with the flow of the traffic there.
Okay, the maps I've seen, just one entry into the place.
Yes, it has a stubout to the neighborhood that's under development next door.
Okay.
And that development also has another entrance to Heebner Road.
Okay. Of course, your company knows it's going to add to the traffic there in Heebner, right?
Yes, sir.
During certain times, in mornings and evenings.
Yes, sir.
Then we got the project on Seneca and Evers, and then we got this project here and the other side of Banderas, we're going to talk about here later, but I hope the voters in this town realize what's going on here. And I do appreciate what you're doing. The property need to be sold off, need, something had to be done with it, so, good. I'm for you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Okay, I will open the public hearing at 6:45. I do have two emails that were sent without stating which particular agenda item they were on, but seeing as they both have to do with a school population, I guess they would have to do with both of them. So I'll go ahead and read those, since they were recommended to read during the public hearing, and then if anybody else wants to speak, they can. Just be sure to read it at the meeting during the public hearing portion. This is from Melinda Moritz. NISD used to talk with us yearly about expected development in the city and has made appropriate plans for more development. We are unable to tell the developer anything about the style of their homes, as the state law precludes us from limiting what they can be built of or how they look, as long as the structure meets or exceeds the building codes. Traffic is always going to be an issue, but we can't prevent persons from developing their land due to traffic. We can make them make adjustments to the roadways to accommodate the traffic. I have a letter to our attorney, attorney asking what we can and can't enforce when it comes to requirements for improving roadways, and we should have an answer soon. So that's from our public works person, and I think that was in response to the next email, which I'm going to read, which is from Kathy Hill. She says, "I have a conflict and cannot attend tonight's zoning commission meeting. I would like to register my concerns at the speed the city is moving to rezone and bring densely packed development to Leon Valley. I live in Seneca West, but I am writing about both items on tonight's agenda. I hope you will read this at tonight's meeting. I strongly urge you to consider that we don't know yet how the current R6 developments already under construction on Heebner and on Evers will impact our Leon Valley community. You've had no opportunity to implement lessons learned into the plans for future development. Traffic on Heebner will be horrible and potentially unsafe for children at the Leon Valley Elementary School. Have you even discussed with Northside ISD the potential impact to schools? Do we even know if they have room for additional students at nearby schools, or will new families have to send their children elsewhere? No matter the property zoning, what I ultimately care about is, one, the number of homes built, two, the quality and character of the homes built. Will they be value-added, will they be a value-added proposition? And three, ensuring that we can get in and out of our neighborhoods safely and quickly. Cars traveling west on Seneca pay zero attention to right-of-way at the Seneca and Banderas Road intersection. Both projects on your agenda are from builders who so far have only cleared land. We have not seen their final product. Will it be something people even want to buy? I would not be so quick to approve zoning changes until you've had a chance to see what they're building and whether it truly is in the best interest of Leon Valley residents, not for some future and so far imaginary Leon Valley residents, but in the best interests of the people who live here now. We don't have much vacant land left. You have tools within your authority to prescribe, for example, masonry exteriors on three sides. Please leave a buffer of land for existing homeowners. It's not right to ruin what they spent their lives building and investing. Of course, builders will tell you there's no market for new R1 housing. They can't maximize their profits unless they tell you that. Once they've built, they will move on, and Leon Valley will be left with the repercussions. How you proceed will profoundly impact the sense of community here, which is a value I haven't yet seen calculated. You know it's something you find everywhere. Once it's gone, it's gone." And now it's open to anybody else who wants to speak on the property on Heebner. If you, yeah, the public hearing was opened at 6:45. Do we have a list to write on this evening? Okay, just make sure you state your name.
My name is Beth Mersch, and I live in Seneca. My issue with adding more homes to the Heebner Development, whatever it's called now, is that the traffic impact on Heebner is going to be significant, and are there any plans to add more traffic lights, to add more lanes to Heebner for the turn lanes or whatever? I think it, it's bad enough when the, it's school time and all the traffic and getting into the right lane and all of the, the issues with that, but having two exits, entrances, whatever, both without stoplights is going to be a zoo, especially if they're trying to turn left across traffic to go the other direction. And I think we have some significant issues already with the traffic volume on Heebner, and especially with such a short right-turn-only lane and a short left-turn-only lane. It's already very confusing, and people are trying to change lanes. If you have people trying to get out onto Heebner very close to that whole intersection, which relatively speaking, they will be, I have real concerns about that. I also have concerns about the whole garden home concept, because they end up looking like little cracker boxes that are on top of each other with no driveways, with, with, you know, people parking on the street. I have issues in my older neighborhood where there's space for four cars in a driveway, and people are still parking out on the street because they have so many cars to a family now, especially with older children staying at home. So I, I would want to make sure that the street widths are adequate within that subdivision, and that there is adequate parking, and the expectation that everybody's going to pull their car into a garage is crazy, because it's not going to happen. But, but I do still have, my major concern is about the impact to Heebner and what responsibility the builder will have to put traffic lights or to bear the cost of widening Heebner to make entry and access into that subdivision a little less painful for all the other Leon Valley residents who are just trying to travel that road.
My name is Charles Matthews, I live on Seneca. My, my concern with this project is if we leave it at R1 as it currently is, that will be just fine. That way, the developer is, is, can still develop his land that he has invested in. R6, it's not good enough, they want to take everything and shrink it down yet even further. This one to 30 is, I can't imagine that. The traffic, I feel sorry for the people on Evers, they'll never get out of their subdivision, never. They will be stuck every morning and have to play chicken to get out, get out to go to work. The traffic will be a nightmare, and the safety to the children at that elementary school needs to, needs to supersede anything we want to do. They are first. And that's, I think, the, between the traffic and the safety, leave it at R1, and I think we'll be just fine.
Can I have them fill out our form? Name and address.
Anyone else wishing to speak on the development on Heebner? Okay, seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing at 6:53. Discussion amongst my peers up here.
Well, I am concerned, as, as it's been brought up, not only by people in the community, by also others that are concerned about the future impact of land use. And so I think public safety is an issue here. If we continue to allow R6s, just because it is going to increase the, the density of these areas, it is going to impact traffic, even though the traffic analysis might indicate minimal. And I do worry about the expectations that developers have, that because we allowed Phase 1, well, then I'm entitled to Phase 2. So that doesn't, that doesn't take into the equation what citizens are saying, what actually the master plan says about the size of what these areas should be. They were, they were zoned R1 for a reason, and I don't see any real cause as to why we should change it from an R1, just because he's already had the first phase of it. So, so, so these are my concerns, and, and I believe that the public just have legitimate concerns as well.
Okay, my concern is not with R1, R6. My concern is that traffic, the presence of, the absence of traffic control signals at both exits. Are there any plans for this kind of traffic control? Possibly traffic lights? That's a good suggestion. And is it feasible for a developer to be asked to widen the road at the point of his development? Finally, is there a school crossing right now for the school?
Yeah, there's a school crossing manned by a crossing guard.
Okay.
Right there on Heebner.
All right.
As well as a school zone that can be extended if it needs to be.
Okay.
And also, the, as we heard last time, they were in talks with the school district to maybe put a gate right there on the end of the community, so they don't even have to come out on Heebner, the children that live in that neighborhood.
Okay.
Because the, right at the end is a fence right to their parking lot, and so it wouldn't even have to be, like, necessarily into a closed part of the school grounds, just into the parking lot area, where they have a really wide sidewalk.
Okay. So then the remaining questions then are about the traffic lights at both exits. Under whose jurisdiction is, does that fall? I mean, is that something you have to get the citizens to listen?
Is Heebner under texta? No, it's not under texta, but a development of this size doesn't need a traffic light?
That's the sweet truth, you are concerned about traffic. Because we're looking at so many homes, really, for both phases. How many homes is this?
For both?
Forty-nine, and I believe we had eighty, eighty-six in the course.
That's 100 and a half.
Yeah, so it's, it's under 150, and we have developments bigger than that in Leon Valley that don't have traffic lights, and they don't struggle with their cars getting out of their homes in the morning either, so.
All right. So the widening of Heebner is also not a piece of the consideration? Okay.
No, you don't have.
Those are all my points, please.
Once you get these, these housing additions in there, people moving in, you're going to have an increased traffic, guarantee. And just understand that.
If you have at least two cars per home, I'm sure.
Yeah, some will probably have three, a great big old pickup to boot.
There you go.
We already discussed that in the past.
So that is a concern of mine, still.
And I'm concerned that just because there is a school traffic guard there, and there's indications where students can cross safety, I've driven through there, and during that period, the traffic can, can back up for blocks.
Period.
So if we add an additional over 100 more units there, plus cars, it will impact the density, and it will impact the quality of life for those people living in that area. It will.
That's what I'm asking about, something.
I think that's a quantity that we have to consider, too.
I've, I've driven down that corridor during all times of day. It does get backed up at rush hour, mostly for people trying to turn left at Evers, and then the right lane gets backed up from people trying to get out of the left lane in a hurry to get into the right lane, and then people have to slam on their brakes because of it. But during school hours, it only gets backed up because of the line of cars waiting to get onto school property. And then if somebody tries to turn left, it backs up the left lane because there's no left turn lane, but.
It's like that up to 6 o'clock, because I've driven on that road between 5 and 6 o'clock.
At rush hour, but it's not for school traffic. That's just rush hour traffic, but it does, I mean, it moves a lot faster than traffic on Banderas, that's for sure.
Well, it will get better. That's, that's the bottom line.
But, but that's not, that's not something that's going to get fixed by the road getting wider, and it's not something that's going to get that much worse by 150 houses.
So this is for Phase 2?
Phase 1 has already been approved. This is for the six acres, Phase 2.
Yeah, so this is just, it's 49.
Forty-nine.
Forty-nine more homes, but the point was brought up that it might not be in line with the master plan. I'm looking at the master plan right now, and the Heebner Road corridor, it says, "Land use in this area encourages all the vacant area located on the east side of Heebner Road across from the elementary school to be zoned R1, R3A, and R6. Vacant areas zoned B2 should be rezoned to R1, R3A, R6, and R7, and mixed use." So this is exactly the kind of thing the master plan asks for.
Well, if it says, it says the potential, it doesn't mean that everything has to be R6.
But it doesn't, but.
It allows for the, for the potential, it doesn't mean just because there's one R6, we just, you know, let bother everything in.
But we're not rezoning everything R6. We've rezoned other plots of land on Heebner, other, we've rezoned one to duplexes, and so we haven't rezoned everything R6.
Well, we're looking at the density in this area, and, and it seems, everything seems to be going to R6.
Well, not everything, though, right now we're looking at Heebner. You've looked at, you're thinking of all of the plots we've ever rezoned in the whole city. Right now, we're looking at Heebner.
Right.
You need to think only about the things we've done on Heebner. You're saying everything we've done is R6. This is the only plot of land on Heebner we've rezoned R6.
The most recent ones, Evers and, and Seneca.
That's not on Heebner.
I know, but that's also an R6. I'm talking about developers coming in and automatically requesting, even though they purchased it for an R1, we want to change it.
But right now, we're talking about Heebner.
Okay, and Heebner, again, is going to go, they already have an R6. R1 is perfectly applicable.
But what I'm saying right now is, we, you have to, you have to compartmentalize. We are talking about Heebner. And you might not want to rezone the entire city R6, but right now, we are looking at the Heebner Road corridor section of the master plan, and we are looking at the Heebner Road corridor. And yes, they are connected to the rest of the city, but right now, we are looking at a specific corridor, and we are looking at a specific plot of land. And you can think big picture in the long run, but when you talk specifics about the master plan, this is the specifics of the master plan, saying this is what we want for the Heebner Road corridor.
The master plan is.
And we have done that on, we have done that on Heebner. We have not rezoned everything R6.
And the master plan does deal with the specifics, but we, we don't live in the specifics. We have.
But you bring up the master plan at every turn, and I'm bringing up the master plan back at you.
Banderas corridor is going to impact us, and we're going to impact the Banderas corridor. So you can look at a specific, but it's kind of like putting blinders on and saying, I don't care what's going on around me.
But I'm saying, I'm saying that people are ending at this housing development, and you're saying that the traffic is going to back up down Heebner.
It already does.
And so they're not even making it to Banderas. They're backing up down Heebner.
They're backing down on Heebner, and they're backing down from Banderas.
And then they end up this housing development where their house is.
It is, although, the more traffic, the more density that we build in these areas, the more problems the city's going to have.
And you're going to have that everywhere, that's what happens when you develop.
And R1 is, is applicable, that's all I'm saying. A1, R1 is applicable.
And you can't build R1 everywhere. Not everybody wants to live in R1, not everybody can afford to live in R1.
Well, that's just the problem. We don't, it's becoming a sort of like.
Where do you want them to live?
Where else? Somewhere else.
Europe?
Wherever.
New York, the slums? Mexico? You want them to not live in America?
And the existing R6s, they haven't been built yet, how about those?
Where are you going to build those?
Well, we have one right here on Evers and Seneca that hasn't even been started yet, so.
But that's what I'm saying, you can't tell developers what to build.
Let's, let's have diversity. Let's, let's have diversity and minimize the impact they're going to have on future generations.
What about minimizing the impact on future generations by infilling our cities instead of endlessly expanding into the nature that's outside 1604? And making them drive for hours, expend all those fossil fuels.
And we do have diversity, if I may add, because there are lots of R1 homes, so some R6s. And we do have diversity, if I may add, because there are lots of R1 homes, so some R6s. Well, just saying. Affordability.
Well, this is, this is zoned for an R1.
I know.
Here we built an R6.
Changing it to an R6 is.
Anyways.
There's R1s around, I'm just.
As somebody that went to school for planning, the Heebner Corridor is a perfect place for R6s. The master plan, I agree with. Adding on to this is a great thing, I agree with. I don't have further content to add to this topic. Next to an elementary school is a great place for these kinds of homes.
I have no concerns.
I have no concerns. High density next to a, a road. That's what I was taught in planning school. Low density, farther away from roads. High density closer to roads.
We got citizens out here who want to talk.
We do. Do you have something you wanna say?
Not really. I was, uh, Jeffrey McKinnon with Coot Engineers, the applicant, Century Homes.
Engineer.
Um, so if you had any engineering questions, that's why I was standing up here.
Yeah.
Heard a lot of traffic, uh, comments, so if there's any of them that you specifically want me to address, I can address, um, I can start with traffic signals. Uh, I can tell you, I, I'm not a traffic engineer, it's not my specialty. Um, I pretend to be one on Tuesdays and Thursdays, so you're lucky. It is Tuesday. Um, but a traffic signal, in order to do a traffic signal, we have to meet certain warrants under traffic rules. Um, it is some guidelines put together by traffic engineers that's used nationwide. When they look at an intersection, there are, I wanna say there's twelve different types of warrants that we look at and three of them have to be triggered in order to warrant a signal. And some of those things are, you know, turning movements and delays or accidents or, you know, there could be af, you know, analysis after the fact, after the intersection's been there for a while. So, but I will ninety-nine percent sure that this development will not trigger any of those warrants for a signal. Um, so that probably is not gonna happen. In addition to adding a signal to a road reduces its capacity. So you're going to be limiting the capacity of Heebner Road if you introduce one or two more signals. It just limits that road. So that's probably not gonna be an option. Two, on turning lanes, um, those would be identified during TIA, during the traffic impact analysis. So we will, as part of the planning process, not part of zoning, but part of planning, our next step would be to go take traffic counts, um, and then introduce our development to those existing traffic counts to see what kind of delays might occur. If those delays are graded A, B, C, D, E, F, and depending on how bad that level of service gets degraded, depends on what improvements we might need to do to the roadway. If those improvements are, and I hate, I hate to say this, but if they're too costly under state law, we don't have to do them. If it's not proportionate to our impact to the surrounding traffic network. This was a state law passed, I don't know, five or six sessions ago? Long time, so probably twelve years ago. And, uh, basically, let's just say, let's throw out a number. Every home is worth $2,000 to the system. And that's your whole street system. So if we do $2,000 times forty-nine lots, that's not gonna cover the cost of a right turn lane or a left turn lane. They're gonna cost more than that. Therefore, our development and the improvements we would need to do is not proportionate to the cost. It's hard, can be hard to understand and explain, um, but it is a rule in place at the state level that impacts cities and impacts developers on what they have to do or can do or be required to do with their developments.
Okay, so you're talking about some kind of conscious improvement, right?
No signal. That's what I was saying, a traffic signal, traffic signal won't even warrant, just based on calculations.
Right.
But it could, we could trigger a turn lane possibly based on the traffic study that we would do ultimately. And if that study indicates that we need to do a turn lane, then we gotta look at what that cost of that turn lane is versus what our development is contributing to the network, cost-wise, supply and demand.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
And if our demand is too high for what we're having to put in, then we don't have to do it under state law.
Okay. I think I get the picture. Okay.
Thank you. You have a question? You have to come up to the mic. If it's a question, we can answer. If it's just a comment, keep it very short.
Okay, it's, it's two comments.
Okay.
One, I agree completely with this commissioner over here in that just because they already have an approved rezoning for R6 housing in the primary subdivision area that was previously requested, it doesn't mean that the additional six acres have to be R6 also. And my thought is that if it was poor planning on their fa, on their part that they didn't have two exits for fire safety, then I think it's a reasonable expectation that this additional six acres could be done in R1 housing because it would still give them their fire exit and they would achieve what they needed this additional six acres for. My second comment is, I think it is a very sad statement that we have to wait for a bad accident or to see how bad the traffic gets before we can even consider making traffic adjustments to deal with this increased traffic that's coming out onto Heebner or going into Heebner. And that's not even to mention what the construction traffic is gonna do to the area. But I, I think it's, I understand that if it costs too much, the developers get out of it. But I think it's sad that we have to live through the bad stuff and see how bad it gets before we can be, or instead of being proactive and saying, we know that there's gonna be at least two cars to every one of these houses coming out onto Heebner and we need to plan for that.
I, I have a comment to the second part of your comment. They, they do plan ahead, that's in the formulas. The part about the accidents and the adding the lights or stop signs, that part of the measure for lights and stop signs is just for where, um, intensity of traffic doesn't trigger a lighter stop sign. So in very dangerous parts of roads where you don't have good visuals or there's a curve that everybody speeds around, they'll add things like that because there's been a lot of accidents. They're traffic calming measures instead of traffic controlling measures. And so most of the time, lights or stop signs would be a traffic controlling measure, like on Banderas, how it's a nice straight road and they had to add lights so that there are gaps in traffic for all the places they didn't add lights so people could actually get out of parking lots and neighborhoods uh, and so that the cars don't go eighty miles per hour through the middle of a town. Uh, but then there's other places where traffic gets dangerous because you don't have a good line of sight or there's a dangerous curve that people were going eighty on and then rolling their cars away. Uh, and, and so that's why you end up with like, this is a curve, please go fifteen miles per hour. Uh, this is a curve, we're putting a stop sign on it for absolutely no reason, even though there's no other road. This is a curve, we're putting a stoplight on it because there's a driveway that comes right here that you can't see that's just around the curve, stuff like that. Um, or they'll put a stoplight because, uh, people were just crashing into each other for no reason. Uh, that's what he meant when he said, 'cause there's accidents.
Yeah, I was trying to say that there's two ways to look. There's multiple ways to do it. There's proactive calculation that are predicting what might happen.
Most of them are proactive and.
Reactive ways of doing a signal.
It involves a lot of math and civil engineers go to school for. I have a friend who's a traffic civil engineer and she plans highways and they, she plans lights in cities and, uh, she planned bus routes for a while.
So, and then to go back to the second entrance, um, item. It wasn't really poor planning on our part. The property that we're trying to rezone right now was actually not for sale at the time.
Yeah.
Um, the solution was that we were gonna do fire sprinklers in every home. Uh, so that was the solution. At the time that we were doing this, the cost of a sprinkler system in a residential home was about $3,500. We actually went and got actual bids for the floor plans that Century was proposing and that price came back at $10,000 a home. That is almost a million dollars over eighty-six homes. And when you really look at it, all that cost does is go to the home buyer. At $10,000 added to the value of that home at today's interest rates is $70 a month. So it's a lot for sprinkler systems. So they went and talked to that property owner again, changed their minds and it was for sale. So that's why we're here, solve that problem.
Thank you. Okay. Uh, any further discussion before we put this up for a motion? I saw your hand twitch, Mr. Perry.
So I have a question for the gentleman from Century Homes. I, I know the information's in the, the packet we're looking at, but just for the sake of clarification, do you already own this piece of land or not? You're shaking your head no.
No, we, we don't own the property. We have it under contract, apparently.
Okay, okay. All right, so you're in the process of building Phase One. Can you speak to what you perceive to be your risk if you do not get approval through this process with the city to rezone?
Yeah, I mean, the, the project wouldn't be feasible with the current zoning, R1.
No. Realize that.
Yes.
What, what opportunity is lost?
I don't.
If you don't get what you're looking for?
I don't think that's an appropriate question.
Well, I just wanna hear kinda, you know, you're, you're trying to add to the size of the overall project, but if you can't do it, okay, now, will you keep working towards, um, being successful in this process or maybe just abandon it?
I mean, we, we love working with the, the City of Leon Valley. You know, this is our, our first development here, but, uh, in the San Antonio general area and the, and the metro area, we have about thirteen communities open. Uh, one of them is just, uh, real close to here down, uh, Hausmann Road and near I-ten. Uh, so I invite any, any of y'all to come and visit the communities and, and look at the type and quality of homes that we build. Um, not only do we have, you know, the first time homebuyer homes, but we also have move-ups, so it's a variety of homes. Uh, the quality of homes that we're looking to build here in Leon Valley is high-quality homes, um, great-looking products and, um, it's gonna be family-friendly too in being that it's right next to an elementary school. I think it adds a lot of value and adding to the walkability. If you, if you were to go see the first section, uh, there's an open space uh, that not, not only provides a buffer between the, the neighborhood, but there's also a sidewalk that it's eventually gonna connect to the elementary school. So even the neighborhood behind us will benefit in the future from being able to walk through the neighborhood to get to the elementary school without having to go all the way around. So I think there's, there's a lot of value in the neighborhood that, that we're currently developing, where we're gonna be building here very soon, uh, this summer. And, um, you know, we would just like to continue working with Leon Valley and, uh, just being a good partner. You know, we're here to, to be good partners with the, with the city and, uh, just build quality homes.
Thank you.
Yes.
I, I have a question. That buffer you speak of in the sidewalks.
Mm-hmm.
That's feasible with an R1 project too?
Correct, yes.
Um, any, any further discussion?
I just wanted to add an observation that I was looking at the neighborhoods in our, in Leon Valley and I used the charts that were in our book. And I found that, my estimation was that around the Heebner Corridor that there were five, at least five, um, entry and exit, exit streets available to the community that lived there. So that, that kinda matches, um, the kind of building or the kind of entry exits that we've had for like seventy-five percent of our communities of the neighborhoods.
Yeah.
So, um, I just wanted to add that.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, I'll entertain a motion. From any brave soul that wants to make one.
Well, I'd like to make a motion that we retain that property as an R1 as it's listed. Do we maintain it?
You want to.
Keep it as it is?
You have to put it, you have to, you have to put it in the words according to what was asked for on the agenda. And so what was asked for on the agenda was a request to rezone from R1 to a PDD. And so then you would have to send it to City Council, uh, recommending denial.
Then I make a motion that we recommend a denial, changing it from an R1 to an R6.
Okay. We have a motion to send this to City Council with a recommendation of denial. Is there a second? Motion fails for lack of a second. Anyone else?
I move that we recommend that the stand as submitted be approved or sent to commit to.
Sent to City Council.
City Council for approval.
We have a motion to send this to City Council with a recommendation for approval. So that would be to approve the rezone from R1 to PDD with the base zone of R6 with the changes. Is there a second?
I second the motion.
Okay. So that's a motion to send to City Council for approval with a recommendation to approve by Commissioner Roof and a second by alternate Fernandez. Uh, we'll take a roll call vote, please.
Vice Chair Andrea Roof?
Aye.
Aye.
Commissioner Blackmore?
Abstain.
Perry? Mayor Gomez?
Nay.
Second alternate, Mary Ruth Fernandez?
Aye.
The rest?
Aye. With four ayes, two abstains, and one nay, that sends it to City Council with a recommendation to approve. I think if I did that math correctly.
Thank you so much, I really appreciate it.
Yep.
That's your prerogative.
Yes.
Okay, that brings us to item three point one. Presentation, public hearing, discussion, and possible recommendation on request to. and possible recommendation on request to rezone approximately twenty-seven acres of land from R1 single-family to planned development district with R6 garden home-based zoning The being Lot One, Block One, Good Samaritan Lodge Nursing Home, subdivision parcel one, more legal language, located at sixty-five eighteen Samaritan Drive. Ms. Teague?
Okay, so to, we're, excuse me, uh, conducting a public hearing, this is our second one, uh, for you guys to make a recommendation to City Council on request to rezone approximately twenty-seven acres from an R1 single-family, uh, to a planned development district with Gar Six Garden Home as their base zoning. So back in nineteen seventy-one, the property was annexed, and throughout the years from nineteen eighty-four to two thousand and eleven, several attempts were, uh, made to rezone the property, which was denied. Um, the applicant is asking that the frontage of the lots be reduced from forty-five feet to forty, which, uh, the lots will still, uh, conform to our code being forty-five hundred square feet. So for, to meet the ingress egress distance for the fire code, the applicant is asking the city to grant Hillman ease, emergency-only easement. Uh, the applicant is also requesting that any future deviations to the plan be internally approved, as long as a deviation doesn't exceed ten percent of the approved plan, and that is in our code. So the applicant did provide a traffic impact analysis. The proposed streets are fifty, have fifty-foot rideaways. Uh, the TIA indicates development will create additional one hundred and sixteen peak-hour morning trips and one hundred and fifty-six peak-hour evening trips along Seneca and Grasshill. And both Seneca and Grasshill roadways are capable of this, uh, traffic increase. And this is the traffic impact analysis tables that the engineer proposed. So the property right now is zoned R1, and if developed would have, as an R1, a hundred and four lots by right, by our permitted code. Um, the applicant is asking to increases by sixty-two lots, and the result would be an additional point five vehicles, uh, per minute on both roadways. So our master plan does recommend R1 for this area, but as Chair Rouse read earlier, the Planning and Zoning Commission, City Council, can initiate proceeds, uh, to, um, change the code, uh, and it does state that R6 is allowed. Uh, the majority of the surrounding zoning area is an R6. A hundred and twelve letters were sent out to, uh, neighbors within two hundred feet of the said property. We did not get any back in favor. We had one that was delivered opposed, and actually, it's twelve that's undeliverable. This is the aerial view of the property. It is partially plotted. Another, uh, location map. So all fees associated with this request to rezone have been paid, and, um, so the development of this property would increase ad valorem taxes and sales tax for the city. The applicant is here, as long as a developer, if you have any questions. Um, our applicant does have a PowerPoint that he would also like to present, if you guys want to. Want to watch the second PowerPoint before you open the public hearing?
The same from last time? Okay.
Uh, we're just addressing some comments from last session, that's all we're doing here.
Okay. Bring it up.
All right. So, uh, all right. All right, so, uh, effectively, everybody can hear me? We're good? Okay. So this PowerPoint addresses, uh, three items. Uh, there were technical comments that came back from, uh, from the engineers and from Chief Norton and from staff. There were commission's comments, and there were neighbors' comments. So I'm going to go top-down to make sure that we're addressing all of those, uh, to make sure that, uh, the commission is aware of, uh, everything that's been addressed so far. So in terms of technical revisions, we had, again, uh, three comments, uh, well, three sets of comments. One from, uh, the fire chief, city engineer, Department of Planning and Zoning. Uh, we effectively came back with a revision to our application. That's why I wanted to spend time just discussing those revisions with you. So, uh, effectively, we modified the PT project plan, we modified the fire plan based on, on the chief's, uh, comments. Uh, we also, uh, we have one modification to the Code of Ordinance, uh, for the R6 Garden Home, and that is the reduction of, uh, the frontage from forty-five to forty feet, although maintaining and honoring the code for the size of the lot. So we're going deeper instead of wider, and forty feet is actually plenty for a lot of, uh, potential develop, uh, potential products and types of homes that could potentially go there. And, uh, we provided, for that area, we haven't discussed as much in the previous, in the previous meeting. We, uh, we talked more about some other stuff. So just wanted to address this. Uh, we revised the fire plan. I'm not going to go into a lot of details, but effectively, a whole bunch of, uh, details that, uh, the chief wanted, we implemented. Uh, he wanted more detail on this exit here. So basically, just to provide an overview, uh, again, uh, the entrance comes straight off of Grasshill. You just go straight from Grasshill. You have, uh, you know, development here, that's the R6 configuration, and to be able to comply with the IFC, the International Fire Code, we need the second exit. Uh, that is to maintain the safety of the residents. Uh, so yes, one can sprinkle, but sprinkling generally does not get us where we need to get from a safety perspective for access of emergency vehicles. So now, uh, and this is also, so I, I will just move on here. What we're asking for is not a permanent easement. We're asking for temporary easement. I just wanted to be clear on that. I don't think we were very clear about it last time. And what we're asking for is a temporary secondary emergency, not a permanent one. And I'll explain to you why that is the case. Uh, but ultimately, this will go down to the Samaritan Road, uh, for the secondary access. It will be strictly initially available to emergency vehicles, and, uh, the fire chief came back, uh, basically approving, oops, sorry. Uh, basically, we'll be doing a twenty-foot fire lane, and we, that can withstand seventy-five thousand pounds. So that is in accordance with the IFC requirements. Uh, that's additional cost for us that you will incur. Happy to do that. Uh, in terms of, uh, the easement, we are proposing an easement that is strategically drawn to accommodate any future developments on the adjacent property, be it the, the city property, city-owned property. So be it developed or not developed, if it ever gets developed, uh, we're putting the easement in such a way it can accommodate either R1 or R6 lots, in terms of depth. So believe we covered that fairly well. The chief seems to be happy with it. So, uh, that being said, what we're looking at now, this will look like this, and it goes, sorry, this is pretty, so, and it goes straight to Samaritan. Again, if you look at the notes, temporary access, now we say, well, what happens, uh, you know, wh, why is it just temporary emergency access? Because as we've developed the next, as the city develops the next piece, uh, again, what will happen is there'll be a flow of traffic from that neighborhood to this neighborhood and vice versa, because that neighborhood is also going to be needing a secondary access for, for their community when it comes to, uh, you know, ensuring that the IFC requirements are met. So it's mutual. And again, the way it's laid out right now is to allow for R6 and R1 as need be. So that being said, this temporary easement is also supported by the city's Code of Ordinance. Uh, effectively, section ten point zero two point two-five-one encourages this practice between current developments and adjacent developments to come in the future. So if you look at, uh, section two B, it says, "In relation to adjoining street system, where necessary to the neighborhood pattern, existing streets in adjoining areas shall be continued and shall be at least as wide as such existing streets in alignment therewith." The second one is projection of streets. That's actually more relevant to what we're talking about here, is that where adjoining areas are not subdivided, which is the case here, the arrangement of streets in the subdivision shall make provisions for the proper projections of streets into future, in the future subdivisions. Okay. So the first set of comments were the technical comments, we addressed them. The second set of comments were the commission's comments about adherence to the PDD applicability, uh, standards. So, so we, I, I, we had a chance to address it a little bit last time, and, uh, we just wanted to address it further to make sure that we're all on the same page with this. So a rezoning application was not submitted necessarily voluntarily as a PDD. It's very important that everybody understands that. We, we, we are under the clear understanding that the council wishes to have a PDD application instead of a regular, uh, R6 rezoning application. We believe this is very astute by council. I will explain to you why. Because one, it provides the city forward visibility and input into the current site plans, instead of just saying, oh, you got R6, and then go nuts on designing it any way you want. By, by right, you can just go ahead and do that. So, and then it, it basically disappears from the radar, because then it goes into plotting, and there's no public hearing for plotting. So the second thing is, it commits the developer to mutually agreed upon site plan. There are no surprises. And then that site plan becomes enforceable development standard. This is, we believe, this is good business for the city, regardless of type of development that goes in there. We were happy to comply, although a PD application is substantially more costly, because there's a lot of, uh, engineering, architecture, cost, uh, TIA cost, all of that you wouldn't normally do with a regular zoning application. So, uh, the, and it also highlights things like the second emergency for, for increased safety. So as part of the applicability standards, uh, there is one clause, I believe it's a second, uh, line item, that says, "The land is located in close proximity to established residential," blah, blah, "where it may be desirable to the neighborhood, the developer, or the city to develop and implement mutually agreed enforceable development standards." And, uh, we contend that we meet that criteria. Just wanted to leave it with that, and I want to move on to the most important part, honestly, which is the neighbors' comments. So the first, we captured six different concerns. The first one was, uh, that public hearing notifications were not sent beyond the two-hundred foot perimeter, and, uh, and honestly, we, we agree that the most affected neighbors are in the Seneca West area, and, you know, they are beyond the two-hundred feet. There's an issue, though, and that the code enforces the two-hundred feet perimeter, which means staff cannot break the code without coming to council for, for variance, for variance on the code. And obviously, that is not going to happen if we wanted everybody to be here and notified. So we'll talk about this in a second. Tree preservation, uh, an issue, wildlife preservation, definitely an issue, impact on current lifestyle, of course, there will be one, construction noise inconvenience and increased traffic. That's what we captured, honestly. If anybody will have comments later to let us know if we missed anything, uh, we'd very much welcome their comments. Okay. So in terms of, uh, the public hearing process, I wanted to touch on something. Uh, if you notice, uh, our previous colleagues from Century, uh, they had their second hearing today, their, their, the public hearing today, because the charter for the city requires only two public hearings. The first public hearing happens on the second meeting for the Planning and Zoning Commission, which is today. The second one happens on the first council meeting reading, which is next week. We are actually the ones that requested to add a third public hearing. We requested it so that we can hear your comments firsthand at the very beginning of the process. So although some of you may not have received the invitation, uh, honestly, we knew this would be a problem for this, for this time as well, so we decided to take it upon ourselves to invite you, and we sent you personalized invitation to each residence to make sure that you know that today there is a public hearing, and next week there is another public hearing. So to us, it's very, very important to let you know that the first public hearing was voluntary. We requested it, okay? And we did it because we wanted to listen to you early, we wanted to show goodwill and our desire to be a good neighbor. We also wanted to design our new proposed community as a desirable addition to your neighborhood. We don't want to go against that. We wanted to keep, keep, to keep the flow and make sure that, that the new community is as high standard as possible. We want to engage in dialogue early in the process and ensure that everyone's position is understood and considered, and to allow a group time to react to your concerns. You will see by doing this, two weeks ago, it allowed us to listen to some of your concerns, and we would like to share some of the, some of our thoughts, and welcome very much your, your input on that. So, uh, yeah, I, I touched on that. So in terms of notifications, now, what, what we heard is, we addressed the notifications, glad everybody's here, hopefully we get more people next week. So, uh, tree preservation, wildlife preservation, construction noise, impact on current lifestyle, and increased traffic. But I would like to invite you to look at these in terms of current zoning, which we could ultimately just go ahead and do, or our requested zoning, and the net incremental impact is really what we're here for, because that's what our zoning application is about. It is about that incremental, uh, sixty-two lots that we're going to be getting. That's it. So as you look at the impact with the current R1 zoning, I, I want to invite you to see that tree preservation has substantial impact, wildlife preservation substantial impact, construction noise same, impact on current lifestyle same, increased traffic same. Impact with our requested R6, tree preservation, it'd be very, very similar impact on, uh, between an R6 and an R1, similarly with wildlife, wildlife preservation, similarly with construction noise and inconvenience, similarly with impact on your current lifestyle. The one difference would be the increase in traffic. So what we did to do that, to, to, to address that is, uh, well, first, the tree preservation. We heard you. So we decided to invest to double the amount of trees, the number of trees, that we will be planting in this development. So instead of planting one hundred and sixty-six trees, we'll be going up to three hundred and thirty-two, and these will be new, healthy trees. Most of the trees that are there today are, you know, ash and, and, and huckleberry, et cetera, et cetera. So they're not necessarily the best type of trees to have around the neighborhood. So we hope you agree with us that this is how, we heard you, and we are making the investment to address some of your concerns. The second thing is, we honestly wanted to understand the impact, uh, the increased impact between an R1 and an R6 zoning when it comes to traffic. So we recommissioned the traffic engineer. Now, you learned that traffic engineers are specialized, and that's what we hired in the first place to do this. And for them to examine the difference between an R6 development, one hundred and sixty-six residences, and an R1, the increase of sixty-two residences. I invite you to consider also that the two roads, be it Grasshill and Seneca, were designed at, through traffic to San Antonio originally. That's what traffic engineer told me, he's been around for a long time. He goes, however, that didn't pan out because of drainage issues. So if you see right at the end of, between San Antonio and, and Leon Valley, there's a corridor separating the city as you go south to north, and that is actually a drainage canal. So that drainage canal stopped the flow of the traffic. Otherwise, there would have been flowed traffic through, from Bandera all the way to Fort Ten, through that neighborhood. So that was the initial intent as to why the city spent way more money, instead of doing your typical forty-foot right-of-way to doing a sixty-foot right-of-way. That was the intention. So as such, because these are such wide roads, the impact is, is very, very minuscule. Like, you know, we're looking at the incremental impact, one vehicle every two minutes on Seneca. That's a sixty-foot right-of-way. And that's then one vehicle every three minutes on Grasshill. That's the incremental increase. So honestly, that's all we have. So I just wanted to make sure that we're addressing the technical comments, we're addressing the commission's comments, and we're addressing the neighborhood, the, the neighbors' comments. That's all I have, and happy to answer any questions.
Any questions before I open the public hearing?
I do have one for you about the traffic analysis. We heard another engineer, um, discuss about the different types of measurements and traffic analysis. So I noticed that you did, um, give us a comparison of, give us an R1 and versus an R6, but I'm wondering, uh, that perhaps maybe a better comparison would have been to look at that, that area that involves Grasshill, the existing plus the additional, and then to see what the difference would be in terms of trips. Um, so I'm, I'm wondering... So, I'm wondering why that wasn't done.
Well, that's not traditional, that you do a traffic impact that includes all the neighborhoods around you, because then you will have to include the ridge. You have to include, you know, like the San Antonio side. All of these are R6s. There are six neighborhoods surrounding this development.
No, I'm just thinking about your particular, about this, this Grass Valley area. What you would be, yeah, the neighborhoods that you would be sort of impacting.
Yep.
That, because I think that would give us a better picture in terms of.
Honestly, if council, if council would like to see that, we'd be delighted to show it. Like, you know, we'll commission another study, if that's what council wishes.
Because I think then the neighbors would really go to see what the difference would be.
Absolutely. And we actually, I'm sorry to interrupt. We actually invested in a full-blown traffic analysis. This was not a one-sheet. We commissioned a gentleman by the name of Joe Nix. He is one of the most respected traffic engineers in the city. In fact, the city of Leon Valley had commissioned him to do some work for them in the past. So, and we commissioned him to do a full-on detailed study, because we knew this was an issue, and we just wanted to make sure that we are covered in terms of, like, we understand the impact. Is it going to be a substantial impact? And if it was, honestly, we would have to address it. But what came back from these professionals is that, you know, this is so miniscule that on their radar, compared, say, to Banderas and Hibner, it's like, it doesn't score.
Yeah, with that particular type of measurement.
Yes.
That's why I'm saying, the more comprehensive would have been to include the existing areas there in Grass Valley. What was it in the past? And then, add to it.
So, current versus future. You know what? I'm absolutely happy to entertain that. And if this is part of your recommendation as we go forward to council, we're delighted to do that, and I'll try to do it for next week.
Okay. Would you be able to put that slide back up of the traffic?
This one here, yes. This is an incremental. We actually had.
So, my question is, can you look at that slide and tell us definitively that it does not talk about the current traffic versus the traffic that would be increased with the additional homes?
It does not.
Okay. Well, that's really the crux of the question, right? So, for us, for the commissioners, and I think for the neighbors as well. Okay, so good that you're going to look into that.
It is not, however. I just wanted to stress that this is not a requirement of a PDD or rezoning process. So, what we're asking for here is further assurances, and we are happy to invest in further assurances. And in the next meeting that we will have a public hearing through council, we'd be happy to show the results of that. We'll make sure that's done for next week.
Well, it would be more comprehensive.
Can you?
That type of a study would give.
We'll get it done comprehensively.
It would, and I think it would give citizens living there a better idea of what the actual impact would be.
That's a fair ask, and I know it's not. You're going to say this could not be. We are happy to entertain it. Absolutely happy.
Can you please tell us how much that will cost you?
The additional traffic? That's our issue. We're good. We're good.
I know it's your issue, but they're asking something of you. They have no right to ask of you, so.
We voluntarily are happy to accommodate. We're good. We're good. We're happy to accommodate.
I just.
We're good.
I'm just saying, these things are not cheap.
That's all right. We're happy to accommodate that.
I don't think anybody understands when I say "not cheap", what I mean by "not cheap".
Well, when someone else brought up the issue of asking what certain costs or limitations, we were told not to discuss price.
This is important enough for us to invest in that. If that's what the neighbors, what will appease the neighbors, we're absolutely happy to do that. Simple.
Just so long as you know this body is not requiring it of you, you are not legally bound. It was.
Understood. Thank you, and we will oblige. Thank you.
And also about traffic, the other thing that I was, I think was useful is that under the Banderas corridor future, all the traffic, they'll be exiting from Seneca.
Turning right, yes.
They'll only be able to turn right.
Yes.
So.
And that is actually, was taken into consideration by Joe. Joe is like a super, I'm sure, like, you know, if Melinda was here, she would know who Joe is. He was commissioned by the city for a long time. He just got retiring very soon, actually.
Because that corridor is going to be, we're going to have a lot more traffic, and as the neighbors, those neighborhoods try to access Banderas corridor, it's going to impact the flow of that, even though they're projecting that how much traffic will be improved. Those assumptions are based on their analysis of current zoning in our city. So, we have to consider that, too.
We will, for sure.
Any other questions before I open the public hearing? I know, we will open the public hearing, and we will have citizens speak in just a moment. Any other questions from us for either Ms. Teague or Mr. Shahadeh before we open the public hearing?
Well, I did have one more about the emergency access. I was having a little trouble understanding. You're saying that it's temporary? And so, could you show us again, then?
And it's only for the fire department?
Yes, fire and police.
And police?
Yeah.
So, the residents of that neighborhood wouldn't use it unless the other access is blocked by fire or emergency vehicles of some sort?
So, where is it exactly, on their, the permanent one?
So, if you look, well, the permanent entry-exit is here, okay? So, just off of Grass Hill, you just go straight, and that's the planned development right now, the way the site plan sits. So, what we're requesting is a temporary access along this line here that goes to, this piece here is currently owned by the city, right? I believe it's used to be like the Alonso property. It was acquired by the city. So, this piece, you know, there are, it's not news for anybody that, you know, the city is considering potentially selling this. And what we said, you know, independent from this, like, we don't know what the future is, how council will decide on this. As far as we're concerned, for this development to ensure the safety of the residents and to ensure compliance with the IFC, International Fire Code, we need a second exit. In this case, we thought we just have a temporary emergency access so that if there is a fire right in this area.
Oh, okay. You're saying temporary by, that'll be the access, not temporary, and where you're going to use your land to actually develop an emergency access. Is that correct?
Correct. Well, we will actually, so the temporary here is temporary easement. So, this easement here, are you familiar with the concept of, like, you know, how easements work? Basically, we're permitted.
But you're requesting, at this moment, it'd be the city's easement. It's the city's land.
It's the city's land, and they're granting us a temporary easement. So, we're not being granted a permanent easement, is what we're saying. Until such time that the city develops that, if ever, right? Then, the flow, is what I was talking about here, is what the code recommends and dictates, is that we would have adjoining streets going to a future development if the land next to us is vacant, regardless, right? What we're saying is, we will do it in such a way that allows for future development and will not impact any future development, be it an R1, an R6, an RE1, whatever this ends up being, right? So, what we're doing is, we're keeping, so as our engineers are calculating, based on what I'm understanding here, is that we're keeping a depth that is common between different zoning requirements.
Can I ask, why can't you make the emergency exit next to the cul-de-sac? Right there in your own property, where that little cul-de-sac is on the corner?
Good question. Okay, well, let me answer it.
Why can't you just use two of those lots?
Happy to answer that. The International Fire Code dictates that when you have a rectangular shape, this is approximately a rectangle, okay? When you have like a rectangle shape like this of any development, anything above 30 lots, you are required to have two entrances. However, there's a calculation requirement by the IFC that says that that calculation is, if you take the diagonal, that distance between the two entrances and exits are going to be, it has to be more than half of this diagonal, right? So, we had an issue, actually, at the triangle, because triangle does not have a diagonal.
Yep.
So, we had a lot of fun stuff with that. But regardless, like, in terms of this, in order for us to have, and that's the same issue that it had boss landing. That was what they were talking about. Because their land is narrow and long, right? To comply with that diagonal and take half of the diagonal, they would have overflowed into the next property. They couldn't do it. The remedy for that was sprinkling 86, which is like super, super expensive. So, for them, like, as a developer, I'm just analyzing what happened there, you know, like, they have, it's cheaper for them to buy the land next door and for them to, you know, like, flow the development and effectively just, I know they probably offered a lot of money for this, but that's not our job. So, to answer your question here, if we were to take this formula, we would be right here.
I mean, at the other end, the other cul-de-sac, at the other corner, or just.
Because there's no street there.
This is a drainage canal here, and this is another property that lands.
Oh, to the right, I'm sorry, to the.
Down?
Here?
To the right, at the top, where you have the other cul-de-sac.
Point on your computer screen.
Where's?
Right there.
Yeah, that's what he was talking about. That's not far enough away from the other entrance.
So, you're saying legally?
Yeah.
You cannot, you cannot be, okay, so where is all your?
So, if there's an emergency here, let's say you have a fire on this side here, God forbid, right? Then you have both blocked, and then emergency vehicles can get in, right? So, it's all about public safety. Like, these codes are, like, we're doing it. It's going to cost us a lot more money, trust me, to do this. I know we're not allowed to talk about money, but then to just sacrifice one or two.
Okay, if you didn't have access to the city land.
Yes.
Then what would be your option?
What would have happened is, by code, the people who had developed the first piece of land would have had to do what we're doing, which is provide access to the piece next to it.
So, you're saying that under these conditions, you cannot provide on your own property a second emergency access?
We cannot. We wished we could, honestly. It would have saved us a lot of money than doing this.
That's important, because then you're kind of pushing it on the city.
No, not this, no, no.
If that's the only access you're saying legally you could do, you're requesting the city donate that land for you to.
They're not donating. They're sharing, just temporarily, until somebody else develops that land.
Well, doesn't that impact the value of the city land, too, though, when you cut into it that way?
Hopefully, it'll increase the value, because you're going to have.
Hopefully.
No, no, it will increase value, guaranteed. Because what we've done here, just so you know, for future developments, they will not have to pact and create that lane. We would have incurred that cost already. So, it's actually minimizing the cost.
I was just a little concerned that, as a developer, you're going to be requesting the city give up some of their land so that you can provide an emergency access to the community.
No, no, I think there's a misunderstanding.
Okay.
So, let me try to address it, and you can tell me if I am addressing it or not. An easement is not a permanent access.
Yeah.
First, like, we don't own it. We don't own that land. The city owns that land. It's providing privilege, privileged access. That's all it is. An easement is a privilege to be able to go over that particular piece of land. In this case, the code says that if we're doing this development, we would have to have an exit onto the adjacent land regardless. That's the code. So, as such, we thought we can meet both codes. We can meet the city code, which tells us we should link up to the adjacent property, and we can meet the International Fire Code, which will tell us we need to have the exit that far from one from the other. And honestly, by doing this, save the city money in the future development, because we're incurring the cost of padding and creating that access. And the point we were trying to make is that we have, if you look at the top bubble there, it says, "The easement strategically placed to accommodate lot depth required by the code ordinances of other potential future zonings, such as R1 or R6." So, if the city were to sell and/or decide to develop itself, or whatever happens with that, that easement would actually allow the city to put R1, R6, and save the cost of putting that road in. It's a good thing.
But you're not considering purchasing that land that the city owns right now, right? You're not considering that?
I can't comment on that.
No.
Cannot comment. However.
This is two different projects, you know, every, everyone, its own bubble.
Yep, that's off.
That's a citizen, the other one is a citizen decision.
Yep.
Council decision.
Because the city owns that land.
This one here is a privately-owned property.
Yep.
It's totally, you know, apples and oranges.
I know it's a 20-foot fire lane, but how wide is the street? Still the 50-foot?
The 50-foot, yes.
Okay.
So, we'll basically go smack in the middle.
Okay.
Yeah.
It's not fenced or anything, is?
No, no, just.
Okay. So, people could still potentially use it?
To walk, which is a good thing. We want that.
I mean.
No, not to drive. No, we're going to have a gate.
Oh, there's going to be a gate.
Okay, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Sorry, I'm glad you asked. Excuse me, my asthma is terrible. I apologize.
That's all right.
So, no, that would be gated. I should have been more specific. They didn't.
Yeah, where's the pointer?
Thank you. This here.
Yeah.
This temporary emergency access is going to be gated.
Okay.
So, yeah, so only, they'll have.
The fire department.
The fire department will have a remote to open it.
Okay.
And police.
That's what my question was.
Yeah. I expected, honestly, to spend some time on this slide, so I'm glad.
You can probably just leave it up during citizen comments.
Yeah, of course, yeah, happy to. Any other questions from the commission?
Yeah, one last, that road, this, sorry, this emergency access?
Yes.
Is it going to be paved or, did you say unpaved?
Well, we will not pave it originally, because for future development, you don't want to do that. We will pack it, we will pack it to withstand 75,000 pounds.
Okay.
Right? So, that will cover the biggest of the biggest of any fire engine, right? And we will make it 20 feet wide to comply with the fire lane requirements, the width as per the IFC.
Okay. Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Any other questions for me? Commissioner?
Okay. I will open the public hearing at 8 o'clock, and I have one citizen comment that we got. Was this via email or? This was dropped off from Ray and Sharon Hendricks. "My husband and I have owned our home on Aids Street for 43 years. We are opposed to the rezoning of the approximately 27-acre tract of land from our one single family to a planned development district with our six garden home district. It is the Good Samaritan Lodge Nursing Home Incorporated, located at 6518 Samaritan Drive, Leon Valley, Texas. We would like it to remain R1. Unfortunately, the residents of Seneca West subdivision were not notified of this proposed rezoning since we are not within the 200-foot notification area. Most of the homes that were notified are in San Antonio and will not be affected by this proposed change. Again, please do not rezon this property." And now, anybody else? Make sure you write down your name and address on the sheet, and say your name before you speak, please. But you don't have to say your address. Just say your name and write down your.
Okay, well, I am Sharon Hendricks, and my husband Ray is here. That letter I actually sent in for the last meeting because we were out of town. So, I wanted y'all to know that we were opposed. So, I'm kind of confused now. I came here thinking, I listened to the whole meeting, and I saw that the Dooley's that owned this property, or someone named Dooley, and it was R1, and they could have built R1 on it. Instead, they brought it back six times in saying, "We want to change the zoning", Instead, they brought it back six times and saying, "We want to change the zoning," when our whole subdivision was R1 at that time. And then all of a sudden, now we have Mr. Shahadeh that knows the past history and still wants to put R6 homes in there that he knows our subdivision does not want. It would double the size of our subdivision. And so, and then another comment he had made was that our city would make money, but any money I think that our city makes is gonna be spent on more firemen, more policemen, more everything that's gonna be taking care of all these projects that are going in. So I don't see that we're making a lot of money. Our subdivision has a personality of being quiet, it has the green belts, uh, we are out walking and chatting with each other all the time, and I feel like it's just getting chipped away by developers that just want to make it more dense. I agree with the neighbors that we should look at the other projects that are happening in the city and see what impact they have on our city before we go on and, and use up some of the last vacant acreage there is in Leon Valley, and leave it R1. But then tonight, I got even more confused when he put up some of his comments, and one of them said that the PPD, that the city had asked for a PPD over the three properties at Seneca, so now I feel like we're kind of in a, behind the curve, like it's already kind of almost a done deal that we're gonna be looking at the other properties. And I see now, which I didn't notice, that when you come out, he says everything's going down Grass Hill, well, it's not. People can take a left onto Samaritan, and what are they going to hit? They're gonna hit my AIDS, and, well, my AIDS, the road I'm on, and it's a one-lane road, so it's not a two-lane that people can go back and forth on. So if anyone turns left on Samaritan, they go onto a one-lane paved road. William Rancher is a one-lane paved road, so basically, I mean, that's, that's, and we keep talking about Seneca, Seneca stops at William Rancher right now, it doesn't go through, so there's no other way for people to go. So that would be a problem if people started turning left on Samaritan and then right on AIDS to get back to Seneca and not just go out Grass Hill. And um, I guess the last thing would be that we did not receive any notice about this meeting. I don't know how they were sent out, but...
Yeah, yeah, most of the, most of the houses are farther than two-hundred feet away from this property.
Yeah, but I thought he's, he mentioned that he's notified the neighborhood, and we did not receive notification.
Wayne Ames, I live on Grass Hill Drive, and I've had the concern since we bought the house that the only way out of our neighborhood is over to Bandera, whether it's on Seneca or Grass Hill. You're within a block of the, each entrance is from a block from the other. Has, has any consideration been given to punching a road through this area to the west or to the south to give us a back door?
There's all houses over there.
I'm sorry?
There, there's all houses built up all over there, so you can't, because it's all blocked
My name is Melissa Zavala, and I live on Seneca Drive. And so I've been in the neighborhood not quite as long as my neighbors have been, but I particularly purchased my house because of the quietness of the neighborhood, because it's so secluded, because there's wildlife, because I didn't have apartment complexes all the way around me. I feel safe there, I live by myself, I'm single, I feel safe. My neighbors know me, I don't have, if my garage doors are left open, my neighbor calls me and tells me, I don't have to worry about those things. I'm single, it's a concern with a hundred and sixty-two homes. And I'm looking particularly at you because you're laughing, and I don't find it funny, and I'm all kind of offended.
I'm not laughing.
I just feel like you don't realize our concerns, and you're not hearing our concerns.
I, I'm not laughing, and I'm hearing your concerns, this is my face of listening.
Okay. So my question to you, sir, is, when, and forgive my ignorance, I work in the medical field, I'm, this is not my forte. So my question to you would be that the, the survey that you did for the traffic analysis, if I can explain myself, how many cars were estimated per home when you estimated that point five car per two minutes? How many, how many additional cars were estimated in that neighborhood? Can you, do you know, do you understand what I'm saying?
Yes. Would you like me to answer questions as we go, or would you like me to wait?
Would you like him to answer now or later?
Now.
They would like you to answer now.
I will, I will answer this question first. So there are very complex formulas that go with calculating traffic impact, and honestly, it's beyond me. I do not, although I have architectural background and engineering background, but I don't have the knowledge and, so I cannot answer your question, is what I'm saying. But what I can tell you is the outcome, like not how it was calculated, but the outcome is that we know the, the estimate was two vehicles per, per house, per dwelling. So, and then there is a logical, calculated standards around, you know, the output of these homes, you know, based on patterns, historical patterns, and my understanding is that they're able to assess based on specific formulas that are, that are provided by the ITE, which is the Organization for Transportation Engineers. They set the standards, and these people, I'm not looking at you because I was told last time that I should not be looking, so I apologize. So, so anyway, so in, in terms, in terms of getting the, the calculations and the, the actual, you know, I, I'm happy to give you some, get you some if you like.
Mr. Shahadeh, on your traffic analysis, on page six, if we could bring that up, you have a, a...
That's, that's on, on...
I think so, it was on your, on the...
No, that, that's the document, right? That's the document, yeah, it's not...
But I think you have it up here, too.
We have, we have the increase in traffic.
It says trip generation.
Yes.
And then, um, under the code, um, you do have the rate and the units, and under units, you have a hundred and sixty-six, is that referring to like the number of houses?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, and then they have trips, and so is, are those the units then that you're using to measure? It's how many houses are on it?
So there are tables provided by the ITE, and those tables are the ones being used by Mr. Nix, the engineer, as to, I honestly, I'm not privy to, I'm, I'm...
Oh, so you don't know what that means?
Well, above me, I honestly, all I know is we gave them to a professional engineer, who, if you'd like to, for us to make him available, maybe next time, uh, I mean, we...
Well, isn't it, I thought I saw it on here, I thought that either you or Mindy, somebody flashed this chart up there, it was, it's, it's on there. Let me show it to her, and, and so...
So, so is the question about, about... That's from the traffic impact analysis, yeah, I don't, I don't have it, oh, that's, that's like the full study.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It wasn't in our packet, but I thought I, I thought we brought it up, I thought I saw it for a second, I knew it was...
Well, the...
Wasn't it up there, too?
So the application, the application that we sent was like pretty thick, but we had...
See how it refers to units?
Yes.
So this is the car.
That's the number, no, that's the number, units is number of houses.
Okay, so it, so then that's what was measured, then?
That's correct, yes.
Not how many cars?
No, well, and then how many cars?
Okay, where is that?
So you look at trips, one thousand five hundred and sixty-five trips.
Like that, one car?
No, 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 that's for all units.
But units again, car, houses?
Hundred and sixty-six homes generate one thousand five hundred and sixty-five trips.
So it's based on houses?
Yes.
Not...
Dwellings, like single-family dwelling, there's a formula for that, an apartment, there's a formula for that.
Okay, so maybe there's something...
Uh, okay, there was one more, there were, there were questions earlier about this Samaritan problem.
That's all right, no, that's all right, we'll just answer that one question, and we'll go back.
Let me just answer this one, don't, don't want me to answer?
We'll, we'll go back to the citizens and any other questions we'll answer later.
Okay, uh, my name is Thomas Minneby, this, and I live at fifty-nine fourteen Seneca Drive. So one thing, uh, oh, before I start, I guess probably nobody maybe looked at this, or, my brother was a city planner for City of San Antonio, plus he all, then he went in the private industry, working for federal, state, and municipalities throughout the United States. He worked in New York, Chicago, San Diego, but he was home based in San Antonio. So back then, when they were doing big studies and doing empirical studies, they did studies on children that lived in these high-density homes, and of course, now the, the kids now are, you know, using the cell phones and all that, maybe it won't affect them at all because they don't have the playground, back then they were playing, he's already up in, up in age, so these studies were done long ago. But another study is when you put these homes together, very close, people start getting anger, they get, and they start fighting if you, if you pack them in too close. Now, which leads me to the question, the properties, they want to go from forty-five feet to forty-foot, so how wide is the actual house? So, you, you understand what I'm saying? In other words, it's forty feet, so is there like a six-foot setback this way, so making the house like twenty-eight feet wide, or? I know on, on my property, it's six foot to the property line, so there's twelve feet behind, minimum twelve foot, now that, I know the city can change it, but if it's gonna just be like the six foot from the wall to the wall, I just want to know that.
Am I good for asking? The reason why I look at Chairwoman Catherine House is because there is a specific process that is dictated by, like, the rules of how public hearings are conducted. My understanding is that everybody gets up, they say their piece, and then, and then, and then we answer them at the end. Honestly, it's up to you all...
I leave it to the public, if you want him to answer that right now, there were a lot of yas just now, but if it's not the majority, he can wait. Okay.
Okay, my preference is to do it now, because otherwise we're gonna stack a whole bunch of stuff, because I still haven't answered the first lady's question, so, okay.
Just shortly, he wants to know how close together the houses are.
Yes, so, so effectively, the code says, we will, we will continue complying to the code. So the code says five feet on each side, which creates ten-foot buffer between the two homes, that's, that's the minimum. And depending on, like, these are wider lots, like when you look at the previous lots, they were like thirty, thirty-one feet, I think, those thirty-one feet, it gets pretty, pretty tight. This here is actually still pretty good. There's a good comparison, but let me address your concern, is if you were to go one neighborhood down the ridge, there are two hundred and fifty-four homes in the ridge, on a piece of land that is slightly bigger than this. So, and, like honestly, we drove it many, many times, and I invite you to just go to the ridge and see if this is, if this is a neighborhood that repulses you, or there seems to be a great sense of pride of ownership, there seems to be people, children growing up and being happy, families being happy, so, and they're in R6 development, straight-up R6, the ones next to us here are R6. So just to address that, I would also like to take a second to address the first question, because otherwise it's gonna fall behind. So, uh, first of all, my apologies, personal apologies to you if you didn't receive the invitation, we honestly tried best, I was actually delivering invitations myself at a certain point in time, just to make sure that everybody got them. So, uh, so if you didn't receive it, my personal apologies. In terms of the traffic, so the main entrance is here, and as such, the exit, so this here is only for emergency purposes, you will not see anybody going down Samaritan unless they have business to do that, because that's a pretty tight road, and then you get to AIDS, and AIDS is like, you're absolutely right, your AIDS is, is like, it's tiny, it's tiny, like twelve feet wide in certain spots, right? And, and you have a ditch here and a ditch there, so, uh, so I wouldn't want to drive it, honestly, but I beli- I believe most, I, like, we estimated, the vast majority of traffic is gonna go through Grass Hill. I'll tell you where you may have a flow towards Seneca, it'll happen at William Ranchers. It won't happen, it'll be past you guys, that's when the flow's gonna happen. So there's that, and the other...
That's, that's enough for now, Mr. Shahadeh.
Okay, good.
Thank you.
Well, she had another question.
Okay, my name is Linda Barker, and I live on Grass Hill, and I respectfully request that you leave, you leave it at R1. I will go over some things that I believe this gentleman is not being very ingenuous to us, I was at the last meeting where he proposed to have bought or buying this whole section that he says he's gonna put that, which is, he said he couldn't read about it, talk about it, right? He said that's, I can't speak about it. So he's planning to put, or whoever buys that, or whoever is in charge of that, two hundred and seventy-eight homes on that other lot, that he's saying that emergency thing is going through. So add that to the ones he just said, a hundred and sixty-six houses, right? Which is right here. So I believe he's being disingenuous when he's telling you, "Oh, no, we're gonna, the city owns that, but that's further down the line." So if you put R2, R6 homes there on this, he's gonna say, "Oh, well, you did it for this, you might as well do it for that." And then we're all screwed as citizens and residents of Seneca West. So I have some things I did want to say, other than that. At the last meeting presentation I was at, sixty-five percent, or around sixty-five percent of the people there, they were given an option, project one, proposal two, proposal three, or leave it as it is. Sixty-something percent said leave it as it is, and that was probably what most of the people here that live there wanted to be it. So prop, um, option one was something like we were offered a hundred and twenty homes, and that was on that one spot up there. And, um, then the next with the green area, and then, you know, really nice, and people were going, "Well, maybe so, that might, you know, um, not too many homes, right?" Well, option two came up, and it showed a larger area of homes, I don't remember how many, but it was huge area, not quite this, and the green area was gone, and they had a mental facility or a halfway house put on the corner there at the end of William Rancher, okay? Uh, option three was, the whole thing was all the R2 homes, and, um, later on, they talked about buying possibly this lot and doing this with it. So we're looking at, if you look at the number of houses that he's talking about, of all of those homes, we are looking at, there you go, and you have to take a minimum, minimum two cars per household. So his traffic study, I don't know when that was done or who did it, did they sit in their basement and go, "Hey, look, this sounds good," because I, as sitting here, had eighty-nine cars come by my house as I'm sitting here, and there are three houses on one side and two houses on the other side, and then that land. So eighty-nine houses, I mean eighty-nine vehicles, even if they're in and out, total that up by the number of houses he's planning to put there, that's an impact, that's a huge impact to the people that live there, huge impact. Okay? And then I was gonna say, please look ahead, please look ahead at what could be. See, that lady was right, you seem very dismissive of what we're saying.
I'm not dismissive, I'm listening, I am also just double-checking information at the same time. I'm looking literally at the equation for traffic impact studies right now.
Okay, well, so if you take the number of houses he has there, okay, and you double that times two...
I know what you're talking about, yes.
That's just a slight estimate, because the lady next to me has four cars, one of them's a work truck, and one is a trailer in her driveway. Two doors down on the other side, there's five cars, and one they have to park across the street in front of the neighbor's house. Then on the corner, there's six, five to six cars in any of an hour of the day. Three doors down from there, there's three work trucks, two work trailers, and a suburban, one house. So I'm just being, just saying, two cars per household.
I have the same kinds of neighbors, I am aware.
I'm not being belligerent, I'm just pointing out things that we, we live with and we want you to address, okay? Let's talk about the Bandera Road corridor, which I think is a piece of insanity when you talk about the R-cut intersections.
We, we have hit the three minutes, so...
Okay.
Very quickly.
R-cut intersections, oh, you're giving me three minutes, but other people get longer?
No, they all have three minutes.
Okay, the R-cut intersection, so you've got minimum six hundred cars coming out of those two streets, and we all have to go left, and you go to the turnaround, and that lane ends, so you have to get in the middle lane... So you have to get in the middle lane. And then when you want to get back over, you gotta fight the people coming off the freeway. Just come down and pay the water bill at City Hall, right? So that's just not, that's just not acceptable when you think about it. I know they all want the pretty, nice neighborhood look and feel of Leon Valley. That's just gone, that's just gone. When you have the impact of all the traffic we have, there's just no way that we're gonna have it like it was. Okay, and if it's so, we have so many developers that come in here wanting to buy up and use up and ruin all the, every speck of green space in Leon Valley. If it's such a hot commodity, why can't they build R-one homes? Why can't they build a higher home, higher quality home? Quality, but a higher, lower-density home? I don't know. And he talks about money, costs money to this. I understand it costs money, but developers absorb that money when they buy the house, when they build a house and sell them, so I'm sorry.
Thank you. Did somebody want, are you almost done? You're done, sorry.
Yeah, I was just, you know, I just, I'm asking for y'all to vote R-one only on those areas. It's a nice place, it can stand to be R-one homes. And again, I said, I don't think he's being very, I think he's being disingenuous on some of the things that he said. If you look at some of the things that I printed out, these are homes, if I can show you. These are homes that are being built right now, not far from here. Close together, almost no lots.
These wouldn't meet our code, by the way. And they also wouldn't meet what he's asking for.
He's asking for forty, for forty-five to be down to fifty, uh, forty. And when I looked up R-six home lot size, it's supposed to be fifty feet in the state of Texas.
Thank you. Anyone else?
My name is Beth Mersch, and I live on Longhouse Court. So I'm actually on the other side of Bandera from all of this. But I think we have to realize that this impacts more than just the Seneca West subdivision. One of my observations is that even though Seneca and Grass Hill may have been built with a wide right-of-way for whatever intentions they had at that time that it was built, I think the honest truth is that we've got houses that are on Grass Hill. And that's gonna become a major thoroughfare when you have a hundred-and-sixty-six people coming down Grass Hill because the entrance of their subdivision flows out onto Grass Hill. Those people will never be able to get out of their driveways, not to mention the parking of all these extra cars that are already, that's already happening on Grass Hill. And then you've got all this thoroughfare. It's a very, both Seneca and, and Seneca on my side of Bandera also has houses facing the street. And it's become a huge thoroughfare, both because when construction was happening on other streets, it routed the traffic onto Seneca. And also, the QT has caused incredibly increased traffic on my side of Seneca. But both Seneca and Grass Hill are residential streets. It's a very different situation than a Heebner where nobody or very few houses actually face out onto Heebner. Their subdivisions might enter out onto Heebner, but their driveway doesn't necessarily enter out onto that main road. So I think we need to consider that because everything about this is saying Grass Hill's gonna be the main thoroughfare. And that's where people live. I mean, their houses face that road. And so I think we need to consider that in a different way than just the number of cars that may empty out into our traffic options either on Seneca or Grass Hill. And I also would like to agree that we should leave it at R-one housing and not rezone to R-six.
Good evening. My name is Rajinda Thusu, and I live in 5919 Seneca Drive. So I've been living here for about twenty, this is my twenty-second year. We have come to this place almost, I think this is the fifth time we are coming ever since I moved here for rezoning this place from R-one to R-six. And every time in the past, I think R-seven was also recommended that time to the citizens, and it was turned down. So for the last twenty years, over twenty years, every time R-six comes up, it is being turned down. And every, the citizens, everybody wants them, and most of them have been coming here for the last many more years that I have been here. So I think the voice is loud and clear where the citizens stand. Everybody wants R-one because of a lot of reasons. One of the reasons is that there is going to be hell of a traffic. All those three-hundred-and-odd cars are going to move in through Seneca and Grass Hill within the first half an hour because everybody has to go to office. And in the evening, it may be sparse, so, but morning is going to be hell for everybody. The other thing is safety, which, you know, you did an excellent job in making that presentation. And thank you for informing us with those letters. Thank you for that. We didn't get any, you know, any notification from the city that there's going to be a meeting today, and we need to be here. So I feel though that there is, in that study, there is no safety consideration at all. In the evening, if you see most of the people even from this side of the Seneca move to the other side, our side, west side, and everybody is walking that side, you have small children, you have ladies, you have mothers, you have stroller, you know, mothers with strollers. And citizens from the other side of the Leon Valley also come over to this, to this side, which is the Magic and Samaritan. So it's going to be very, very unsafe for most of us, especially in the evening. And therefore, and the present streets that are there, they are barely, I think, eight to ten feet wide. First of all, any development that has to take place there, we need to broaden those streets at least about twenty to thirty feet. That's one. Secondly, is that with the construction of the flood channel, which has been just recently constructed, which is very good, I'm very happy about it, the value of that property has gone up. And we will be very, very easily able to get people who would go in for R-one or maybe R-two. So therefore, I very strongly recommend that we need to retain it as R-one as has been recommended over the last, say, over thirty years. Thank you very much.
Something from the Code of Ordinances on the screen? Of course.
Fifteen dot O-two dot three-two-seven, paragraph G.
Fifteen dot O-two. Something, paragraph O-two-seven.
Fifteen dot O-two, what's the other? Fifteen?
Dot three-two-seven.
Two-two-seven, oh, okay.
Three-two-seven. If you Ctrl+F warranting, that, there shouldn't be that many warranties in the Code of Ordinances.
Fifteen O-two.
My name's Mark Ferris, I live at six-four-oh-six Royalty Point. And Dr. Caldera asked us to talk about, how to discuss this rezoning application. And I went through the Code of Ordinances that discusses the criteria for approval of PD districts. I'd like to pull that up so everybody can see it.
It's fifteen point two-two-seven, did you say two-two-seven?
Fifteen dot O-two dot three-two-seven.
Oh, three-two-seven, okay. What'd you find it?
And then paragraph G is six pages down. So here, can we, can everybody read that?
Make it bigger.
Oh, yeah, we don't have it.
You have it, three-two-seven.
Okay.
Okay, now go down six more pages. That's fine. So right there. So this sentence clearly says, and everybody can read here, that no PD district shall be established, which does not meet all the following criteria. Not one, not two, all of them. And you can go down through this list. And I'm not gonna read it here. You can each, everybody can go through it and make an evaluation. But I'm, I'm gonna ask that the commission deny this request for rezoning based off of the city's Code of Ordinances. I don't see that this request is consistent with the Code of Ordinances. And if you'd like, how much time do I have left in this? I have two and a half minutes? Okay, then I will talk about it.
Somebody else gives up their time for him.
The land, the land covered by the proposed PD district fits one or more of the special circumstances warranting a PD district classification. So you'd have to go to section fifteen dot O-two dot three-two-seven dot B. We don't want to go there. That one's gonna be a mess. That's debatable. It depends on which side of the table you're on. But we have to meet all of them, not just one. The proposed PD district furthers the policy of the city's adopted comprehensive plan as amended and other formerly adopted city planning documents. The master plan has R-one. I don't know what we have to talk about. The proposed PD district demonstrates a superior development that could be achieved through standard zoning classifications. Anybody here thinks R-six with a forty-foot frontage is superior to R-one? Oh, okay. What was I on? Four, the proposed PD district demonstrates the resolution of compatibility issues with the surrounding development. Folks, this is a rectangular plot of land. There are no compatibility issues. Five, the proposed uses and configuration of uses depicted in the PD project are compatible with existing and planned adjoining uses. That's debatable. Pretty much all the adjoining property is, I'm not gonna say it's agricultural, but it's undeveloped. Six, the proposed PD district demonstrates consistency with adopted public facilities plans, including those related to water, wastewater, transportation, drainage, and other public facilities. The streets going in and out of Seneca West do not support the additional three-hundred and, let's say, three-hundred-and-forty cars that will come in and out depending upon if it's single-parent or dual-parent, dual-income families. We're not supposed to talk about money, I know. And lastly, seven, the proposed PD district, if a mixed-use or traditional neighborhood project demonstrates the provision of open space and recreational amenities within the development that provides for a superior living environment and enhanced recreational opportunities for residents of the district and the public generally. There's a small triangle of land in the middle that is their park. And I don't think it, this commission's calling. I'm really asking that.
Hello, my name's Mike Mascaro. I live in the neighborhood Ingram Hills. It's right south of the twenty-seven acres. My wife and I have lived there for twenty-three years, and we just, we enjoy that green space. Like I'm saying, we're in opposition to this whole project. And most of my neighbors I've talked to, I don't know why they're not here. I guess they didn't get a letter, but they feel the same way. They're opposed to it because it would impact everything, the noise, traffic. I mean, you can do the basic math. It's just gonna increase over all those homes, the traffic and the noise. And it's just, of course, the wildlife. Once they start building, everything's gonna scatter, and they'll be gone. Because we see deer all the time there. We enjoy that, that quietness there. And our sunsets, we'd like to see more sunsets and not the backs of people's houses. So we're just, we're just opposed to this. It's just, and he talked about the history of that land, and it's just, maybe that tells you something that's been denied so many times. It's just probably not meant to be. So that's all I wanted to say, thanks.
My name is Sandy Agiri. I live on Seneca Drive. I've lived there for about thirty-five years, maybe a little longer. One of my concerns is, and I'm not clear, I'm understanding, and that's why I would like a little clarification. So if we had R-one homes, we would have sixty-two lots there? Is that what I'm understanding?
A hundred and forty.
Okay, and then with them being R-sixes, we're talking a hundred-and-sixty houses, a hundred-and-sixty-six houses? And I'm trying to take notes because one of my girlfriends couldn't make it, and she said, "Be sure and bring up notes." Okay, so then, a question was asked earlier about how wide the house would be and how much room between the houses. So are we saying then that this, these houses are only gonna be like thirty feet wide? Is that it? Is it five, five feet on each side of the house?
Potentially, yes.
That's how wide that house will be? So we're talking like, like a double-wide trailer then, is how wide that would be? Okay, and so my question then is, if I were to buy a home in that neighborhood, what price range am I looking at? I know you talked about it before, but we're not. What, oh, we can't talk money, I'm sorry. Okay, forget it. All right, so then, my question would be, if I did buy a house in that neighborhood for whatever price it cost, and I were to have a little get-together, how many cars can fit in my driveway? My visitors?
The normal amount?
What? What would be the normal amount on that, that depth? The driveways there? I mean, you have that kind of information, right, sir? Of how many cars?
I'm just looking for to see if she wants me to answer right now or if she wants me to guess.
Hold on, I wanna see, I wanna see where this is going first.
Well, I'm curious as to if people do have guests over, which, you know, most people do nowadays, you have company.
I mean.
Is everybody gonna be parking all on the street?
Most people park on streets when they have parties.
Well, but the driveways are gonna be right kinda next to each other. So I don't want to block somebody's driveway if I were to buy a house there and I had people coming over. So one car, and then have to go a little further to park further down? And then even further to park further down, third car like that? Is that the way that would work? Because we're not gonna have enough room to park two or three cars in front of my house, are we? That's where it's going. I'm just trying to. I'm just trying to understand how that's going to look. Because when I was here last week, I had made a suggestion. Of course, you know, I understand, maybe we can't do this, but let's see how the things are going to look. I don't know why we're jumping to doing things so quickly without having a, a looksee at how your property over there on Seneca and Evers is going to look. I don't understand the rush to get this done. Because once it's done, there's nothing we can do about it. So are every home going to be two-story then, in that neighborhood? All of them? No. Are all of them going to be two-story? Every single house in that subdivision? Is it going to be two-story? That's what a PPD is? Every house is two-story?
They said no.
No. Okay. So how many are going to be two-story?
And, and it's sort of outside the purview of a rezoning case, anyway.
Oh, okay. Okay. It's hard for me to want to say I approve rezoning when I don't really have a full picture of how it's going to look. And I don't know how y'all can do that either, without knowing the, you know, exactly what's planned there. So I'm totally opposed to it. I've come to every meeting since I've lived in this neighborhood, opposing it, and I still do. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? While, while I wait for him to come up, I just want to let everybody know, usually when we have a rezoning case, it's not a PDD, and we don't get to see what's going on, whether it's business, residential, whatever. We have no idea what's going on it. We only get to know that they want to put a business or residential, and that's it. So this is unusual, just so everybody knows. Go ahead, sir.
Russell Hernandez, I work, I live on William Ranch Road. Just a few clarifying questions. So there's, there's the emergency access that's going to be for just emergency vehicles during an, an emergency. And then I'm wondering if this is going to be just a fully gated, and there's going to be a gate there. So I'm wondering if there's going to be an out at all for residents during emergencies, or if it's just for emergency vehicles. But then separately, is it intended to be a fully gated community where there's also a gate on, on this other exit to Grass Hill? I just, I see a number of scenarios where I, you know, hopefully there would be two exits available to both resident, to residents as well, to get out in either direction, in, if something were to happen. But then otherwise, you know, just the lived experience of, of the neighborhood, Grass Hill, Samaritan, William Ranch, or AIDS Road, people are, it, it's a road without sidewalks, so people are, there's not a lot of traffic. So people are using the road to walk around and enjoy this beautiful nature space. And, and I think part of the, part of the concern is, well, even one extra vehicle on the road, you're, right now, currently, people are having to share the road with the vehicles, or the vehicles are sharing the road with the people. And, and so, you know, I think part of the concern is, well, you know, where's the safe, maybe the place that we are all enjoying to walk is, is going to be less safe just because the traffic, there's not necessarily sidewalks. That's just my, my, my overall impression and, and lived experience of the area, and, and maybe if there's a way to kind of address that, lived experience of the neighborhood that people are enjoying, into where we can, we can enjoy it in the same ways, but then safely with increased traffic, that could be helpful.
She already spoke once. Does somebody want to see their time so she can speak again? Okay. Go ahead.
My name is Beth Mersch. I live on Long House Court. I just have a question because I have been to, I have not been to a zoning meeting before, or I've been to city council and that type of thing, but I definitely am getting the impression that it kind of doesn't matter what the citizens are saying. I'm sorry, but it, it, I, I feel that way. And so I don't know what y'all need to hear to, to vote in favor of what the citizens want. It all seems to be about what the city wants, or the additional revenue, or whatever, but I don't understand how this works because there's clearly an outpouring of citizen concern about the, this development. And I just don't get the impression that our opinion really is going to make a bit of difference into what y'all do.
I got something to say.
Hold on. Would you like us to address this question, or consider, continue the hearing for the, the public hearing before we address this question? Yes. He also already spoke once, so would someone like to see their time?
I don't think that's right to say that city doesn't care for us. I've been living here for 22 years. Every time we, it came to R6 proposal, it was always turned on because everybody was against it, and the city did listen to us. And I'm 100% sure that all of you will also listen to our voice this time, our concern this time, and turn it down, and not rezonate to R6, keep it as R1. So that's what is my experience in the past.
I got something to say. We're very concerned for our citizens. You have three council members here tonight. They're all sitting in separate areas, so don't come together. I would suggest you talk to them, because whatever we decide up here, yea or nay against this thing, I'm completely for y'all. I agree with you. The council determines, has the final word on what happens. And I would strongly suggest you keep coming, come to the next council meeting, and whatever, whatever it takes. That's, I just want to say that. There are people very concerned what you, what you have had to say tonight, and we appreciate it. Thank you.
As a planning and zoning commission, we are legally bound to make decisions based on what's written in the ordinance. And a lot of our ordinances, unfortunately, don't say, but if the citizens are against it, do what the citizens want. They say legally, if it fits this, these checkmarks, you have to send it to city council saying it fits all the checkmarks, so approve it. And then the city council can say, well, according to all the checkmarks, it's approved, but none of the citizens wants it, and since we're voted by the citizens, we are allowed to say no. But we are only allowed to do what the checkmarks in the ordinance say. So we listen to you, and everything you say also goes in the minutes, and the city council members that come also listen to you, and that's why we have the public hearings that we have. And so that way, there's multiple opportunities for you to come just in case you can't make it to a meeting. There's multiple opportunities for you to email or send in a letter in case you can't make it to any of the meetings. And that's why we have the meetings, and why it seems like sometimes we don't listen to you, because we are bound by law to do boring checkmark-y things that don't seem like they listen to anybody. And sometimes, I don't like that, because sometimes it seems a bad idea to send it to city council with approval, but I have to because the checkmarks say I meet all the checkmarks, so I have to send it. And then the city council gets to do decision-y things with their hearts and their brains mixed together, instead of just the brains on the checkmarks with the black papers. So that's how we work up here, which is unfortunate sometimes, and also fortunate sometimes, because then we can't just do whatever our heart wants, which would also be bad for people sometimes. So that's why, that's why we exist, boring checkmark people, and then the city council exists, and they get to combine checkmarks with what the people who vote for them want. So that, that's how that works, and why it seems like sometimes our decisions aren't listening to the people that come to our meetings. But we are still in the public hearing, so if anybody else wants to speak on this, they can.
Travis Leach. I live on Kinman Drive. I just wanted to connect my opposition to the rezoning to, two pieces. One, to the Bandera Road corridor plan. One of the main elements in that plan includes easing congestion on Bandera Road, so moving outside of our specific neighborhood. According to the traffic analysis based on the Bandera Road corridor plan, from what I read, that, is that traffic volumes are the highest where the 410 flyover meets the surface streets of Bandera Road, which begins directly at Seneca, at the Seneca Light. So this proposed plan with this neighborhood just extends traffic onto the Seneca Light. Another piece to consider is the Leon Valley's master plan, specific to this corridor of Bandera Road, is looking at traffic, quoting here, "Traffic calming measures must also be considered." And based on the community feedback that was gathered through what looks like multiple years of community workshops, traffic calming measures was the overwhelming issue to address on Bandera Road. So just speaking to my opposition, not only based on seconding and echoing many of the concerns that my neighbors have, but also to include these to address to the broader Leon Valley community. Also, in absentia, Abraham Diaz, who is one of my neighbors, also wanted to speak on his opposition to the rezoning. Thank you.
Kathy, I also have a letter. Does somebody want to, to read? But I can read it. Oh, you did? Oh, okay.
My name is John White. I live, I live in Seneca Estates. I live on Mary Jamison Street, which is a, a main connector between Grass Hill and Seneca. And I have two concerns. One is, you know, I heard that there's a proposal for 166 houses. And I heard a number of 278 a while ago that kind of came out. That's 444 houses. That's going to be basically trying to come out of Grass Hill and get to Seneca, and they'll be coming through all those streets. And Mary Jamison is one of those streets. So, and we, and it seemed like we're kind of not addressing AIDS. We're kind of not talking about that, that little 10-foot wide road up there, which I'm not sure, you know, we met, we talked a lot about two entrances here. I'm not sure a fire truck could make it down AIDS and get over that way. So if something were to happen there at Grass Hill, there are not two entrances into this subdivision. Maybe they have thought of that. I don't know how a 75,000-pound truck could drive down AIDS Street. But my other observation is, this presentation, and the one before this, seemed like this letters being mailed out is a big failed system, because they're going out, but none of them are coming back. I don't know if, I know this, and this one, a lot of them went to people in San Antonio. I didn't get one. I live on Mary Jamison. And so that's just kind of a, maybe a lesson's learned, y'all can improve that system for the next proposal. Thank you.
Would someone like to see their time, since she already spoke once?
My neighbor Laura Cardenas is also opposed to this, but one of my questions has to do with, I understand that there was a traffic analysis done by the developer, but is Leon Valley going to do one to see how it coordinates with what they're saying? No? We don't care?
The developers pay for their own traffic studies, and then our engineer reviews it to make sure it was done correctly.
And, and our engineer is one that knows all of that, too, all, the same thing. So we're, we can see that, approval somewhere, or in our emails, or notes from meetings?
You can do a public records request and get it after it's been submitted.
Okay. So I, I should be able to see one, so that, that will show that he checked it out, it all looks good, there's no questions. The way there were questions with the widening of the streets, and how we'd have to make this temporary, the fire department came across and, and did that. So we're going to have something like that for the traffic as well?
Yes, ma'am. All, all the documents that are submitted from anybody that comes to the city, once they're submitted and approved, you can ask the city secretary through a public records request and get them.
All right. Thanks. And then will William Rancher be widened? Because it's very hard for two cars to go through there. I'm just curious, because I live near there.
Yes. These are questions that we've all had for the city.
Okay. That'll be in the, in, in all of that, too?
That, that would be a question for the city manager.
Uh huh. About William Rancher and, and about AIDS.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
She is coming in.
Thank you.
Infrastructure, Samaritan, AIDS, William Rancher, Grass Hill, sidewalks, streets.
So we do have some questions out to our city attorney right now. There is some questions in regards to how much improvements can be placed on a developer in, in regards to cost and ratio to the project they are being built. And so all the plans, including the city-owned property, as well as what's being presented this tonight, is all being forwarded to the city attorney to make a ratio determination of how much improvements would need to be done. Because there's also water and sewer infrastructures, water mains, fire hydrants and stuff would have to be relocated in order for some of those improvements need to be made. And then his property, or this one in particular, where AIDS is at, wouldn't be impacted by this development necessarily, but could be impacted by another potential development that could be coming in in the future. So that's when AIDS would be addressed. But from my understanding and the way the code reads, and again, we're waiting for the city attorney to provide his, his opinion, the only thing right now we can ask for him to improve would be Samaritan, and the amount of improvement would be determined on the cost of the project. Hopefully that answers y'all's question.
Any other citizens? Welcome back.
Okay. My name is Mauricio. Thank you for welcoming. I'm sorry, I arrived a little late. So these are, I am again speaking for the, almost my neighbors, which would be people who live on Messenger Creek and Wetheren Creek mainly, since they're within the 200 feet. Many of us cannot attend due to, again, some of us not speaking English, timing concerns, or job, you know, school stuff. Okay. I wanted to know if you have done an assessment of the animals, of the amount of animals and animal species that you're going to this place? Another concern would be if you have reached out to the people mainly on Eighth Street who host the wildlife sanctuaries, and these are going to be majorly affected by this displacement, or if this is beyond, I'm talking to the developer, not, or if this is beyond your concern, since you mentioned the animals are going to get displaced regardless of whether the developments are one or R6. You mentioned that you have doubled the amount of trees going to be planted. When the main concern behind the trees was their size and the type of tree being planted. And I feel like, we feel, this concern has been ignored. And this is, I guess, a question from the neighbors to the council. Our last concern would be if there has been any consideration Our last concern would be if there has been any consideration to the neighbors who specifically moved to this urban area near the forest and wildlife, since this has been a major reason why many of us bought our houses in this precise location. Thank you. One last thing for the developer. The reason I mentioned an assessment of the animals, the amount of animals and animal species, is to whether, see if there's any consideration and see if there's any thought of endangered animals in the area. And that's kind of a big concern for many of me and my peers, since, you know, we know there's a lot of endangered animals. And we also have never, like, many of us never even seen a fox before and before we moved here. And this is like the very first time we've seen some, a lot of these animals. So it's just like, we're really kind of like, especially people my age or younger than me, are really worried about what's going to happen to all of these animals. I know it might seem silly to a lot of people, but, you know, this is our major concern, since we really don't have a lot of wildlife in San Antonio. So to have all this wonderful wildlife in our backyards means a lot to us. So, thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing at 9:06. Discussion.
I would like to add to the discussion. I studied the maps in our, in our planning and zoning book that was provided to us. And I identified 20 neighborhoods, and 75% of the neighborhoods have more than two entry and exit streets. There are five neighborhoods that have only two streets for entering and exiting the neighborhood. And in the other, actually, there's four. And in the other three, the houses that are included in those neighborhoods with the only two entry and exit streets have 126 homes, 197, and 83. So I think that's something that we should bear in mind, that 75% of our neighbors have a greater number, from four, three and four, up to 11 streets entering and exiting their neighborhoods. So I wanted to add that to the mix of our consideration.
The ones that only had two exits, do you know if they were newer neighborhoods or older neighborhoods?
I do not. I was, I was just thinking about that it would be nice if the maps would tell us when the neighborhoods were. Well, I don't want to go through 20 neighborhoods, but you can have that. That's my paperwork. Other things that I included in that analysis was, let's see if I can borrow it for just a second. Oh, yeah. What were the size of the lots? What were the mixes of the lots? And it just seems, on the face of it to me, that having that degree, that number of entry and exits to a neighborhood does not make sense for a neighborhood of 315 or 400 homes. And I'm, of course, I'm interested in the facts, but that's my observation thus far. Are we at the discussion? Are we at the discussion?
Yes, we are at the discussion.
Well, I also think that we are bound by the guidelines and the zoning ordinances. And so we are bound by the current zoning. It is an R1. And I think we do need to also consider the Code of Ordinances, which very clearly describes what's applicable here. And we do also have to consider the future of the impact that the Banderas Corridor Road will have on this community. And any other neighborhoods that are going to be impacting Banderas Road, Banderas Road's going to impact us, and we're going to impact Banderas Road. And it was these analysis by the Banderas Corridor Plan that took this into consideration. And so in their study, they do refer to looking at the city's future use of land. And so they do say that their core principles are to preserve the single-family neighborhoods and green space, preserve, protect single-family neighborhoods by not increasing density of future land use within existing neighborhoods or immediately adjacent to them. It says, focus higher density uses at intersections at Banderas Road. So I think if we're going to be responsible, if we're going to be cautious to make sure that these future generations will have a viable and quality of life, we have to consider these inputs. And the master plan, though, it does refer that, under a PDD, that realistic future links, that flexible planning is allowed for realistic future links and an optimized master site plan for future development. But again, it's addressing the existing master plan. So it's not necessarily stating that flexibility means zoning changes of this nature or increased density. So, and clearly, at the town hall meeting, it was unanimously voted that to keep this land at its current zoning. So these are things that I take into consideration, the significance of what the community states, but also what the zoning states, what the Code of Ordinances states, although this has to be taken into consideration, and the Banderas Corridor Plan. I tend to favor the idea of looking at what the new development that's already underway, how that's going to impact our community, what are the revenues that we are going to, that the city will earn and have disposable cash to, for our future. I heard a calculation that we would be getting $2,000 add, you know, in velourium taxes. I think I heard that at our last session. But I went to our census, and I went to the estimate, the estimate that was provided to us about the revenues that would be provided to the city. And when you took, when I divided it by our number of residents, our current number, not our incoming, to the new neighborhoods, it was $48 and some change. So I wonder where we got the $2,000 that we would be adding per citizen?
That was just a random number that was tossed out. That wasn't a real number.
Well, I took the amount of money that we would get, you know, per year, and I divided it by the number of citizens, and it was a little less than $50.
And it wasn't a, and it wasn't a per-citizen thing. It was, it had something to do with the, how, it had to do with something else, but it was a per-house, something or other, and it was just to do easy calculations as an example. And that's why 2,000 ended up being the number.
Well, 2,000 sounds a lot more appealing than, less than 50. And I agree with the folks that have stated that we want to create a situation that is going to be good for the long run for Leon Valley. And I understand that every time that somebody wants to build in our, on our properties, that by law, the government has to let the zoning committee know, and then the city council has to decide whether they want to do this or not. So we're going to be called back. It's been 40 years that we have discussed this and decided not to do it. But every time that somebody approaches us with an idea, we're going to have to swallow and take a deep breath and listen, and then decide if, if what they want to do is good for Leon Valley or not.
Anyone on this side have anything to say?
I am concerned about those streets. I've been on AIDS Drive in that little area, because I live at the ridge, yes, R6. I'm so sorry. I thought this thing was on. I have, I am concerned about the streets and their ability to, their capacity to bear traffic. I've been to, I think it is AIDS Drive, the road that's behind the ridge that leads to the park at the ridge, it's shared with that community. And it's a little road, as I recall. I don't think it's been changed, it's been improved since I last visited. Pardon? Well, I only moved to the area in the last seven years, but it's been like that since I came. And I'm just concerned about that. I don't know, I'm sure the people who will live in this development will want to drive there at some point, whether to visit the park or something, I don't know. But it needs to be improved to be able to bear this traffic. Whether you do R1 or R6, that road, those roads, Samaritan and AIDS and all of them around there, need to be improved, I believe.
One of the reasons we're here tonight is because we've got some landowners who are now motivated sellers. And I, I keep hearing that, you know, there's resistance against R6, they want to keep it R1. But if you've got a motivated seller and someone comes along and wants to build R1 homes, they're going to get built. So it seems that there's this issue of, those of you who live around that area don't necessarily want to give up the vacant nature of the land. And that just might not be the case going forward. So I think we all have to accept, those who live in the area and the rest of us, too, that there's going to come a day where that land is developed. The other thing that I really think about, I grew up in Leon Valley. I was gone for a long time, but then I came back. And I've seen, I've seen a lot of changes in this area, and mostly with just the increase in people and the traffic. And this Banderas Road project, I guarantee you, is going to take probably two to three times longer to complete than they've estimated, simply because of, you know, when rain comes and saturates the ground, you know, there's lots of time that's just lost letting the ground dry out. We don't have a tendency to work through the night in this part of the country. It just stretches things out. And so the increase in people, the increase in cars, the increase in traffic, and then the prolonged nature of the Banderas Road project is just going to create a lot of headaches. So I appreciate not being interrupted and allowed to speak, because this is kind of where I'm at with this. And, you know, it's, it's a conundrum of sorts, because there's going to come a day when the land probably is going to get developed. And then there's going to be all these terrible things that happen with respect to inconveniences and the loss of something that currently exists. So it's not easy. And there's going to be a lot of unhappy people, no matter what. So that's kind of where I want to leave it. And I'm going to turn the mic off now.
I just might add that what I heard was that people aren't against development, they just want appropriate development. So, and that's why it's R1. So it's not that people aren't against it, and even at the town hall meeting, the majority voted, let's keep it R1. So they are not against development.
I also hear that they really love the space as it currently exists. That's what I hear, too.
And I'd like to add to it that the fact that the families that want to sell their homes, that want to sell their property, they have every right to sell their property. You know, they own that property, and they would like to sell it. And I can't understand, I can't see a way that we would not be able to let the private citizens sell that property if they, if they got a deal that they liked. So that's fine. So that, I believe that, I hear you all saying, R1 is fine, you know, but for the sake of the neighborhood, the R6 is not helpful. It's not helpful to the neighborhood. And the other property belongs to the city. And I know that there are builders that would like to buy that property and build on that. And that could be a compromise, allow, allowing the families to sell their property and allowing the citizens of Leon Valley to keep the 23 acres that we own free and green. So that could, that way, it, it provides the families with a way, and it provides the existing citizens with a way. And so I think about that, too, as I listen to people speaking.
My planning brain says that putting high density below low density doesn't make sense. And I love you, Mr. Chahade, we've been working together for many years. I just don't like putting high density below low density before, before the big street. I can't make it work in my brain. But beyond that, and beyond the opinions of the citizens around it, which I love hearing, I love when we have citizens come. Normally, we don't have citizens come. I love, I love it when citizens come, because then it's not just me up here making decisions with just the seven of us. I love it even more when citizens come and point out parts of our code. I love, I love our code when it comes up. It's even better when citizens know our code and come and show it to us. As I pointed out at the last meeting, I can't, I know you, it wasn't your idea, but I just can't see how this fits a PDD. And so I can't make a motion. I'm in the chair. I can't make a motion. I'm the chair. For that reason, somebody else should make a motion.
So, it can just be a simple, I make a motion, we deny?
Does anybody have any concerns they need him to answer? Did you hear enough answers this evening? I think, I think they got the gist of it.
So, how do we make the motion?
You, you would make a motion to send to city council with approval, or, or with denial, with the recommendation, with a recommendation of approval, or with a recommendation of denial. Or to table it. I don't know why you would table it, but you could. It's available.
Make a motion that we deny it and send it to city council. Let them deal with it.
So, we have a motion to send to city council with a recommendation to deny. Is there a second?
I second.
We have a motion by Mr. Blackmore, and a second by Ms. Gomez, to send to city council with a recommendation of denial. We will roll call vote again.
Second vice-chair Andrea Ruth.
I have to abstain. I, I don't know. I don't know what to do.
Commissioner Pat Martinez.
I disapprove.
So, so you say aye, if you want to send it to the city council with your disapproval? You say nay, if you don't like the motion?
Nay.
Chair Rouse?
Aye.
Commissioner Blackmore?
Aye.
Commissioner Perry?
Aye.
Commissioner Gomez?
Aye.
Second alternate Fernandez?
Aye.
So, let me make sure I wrote down this correctly. We have one abstain, one nay, and five ayes. Okay. So, that sends this to city council with the, the motion to send it to, with our disapproval. And then the city council will vote on it. And, and then it goes from there.
Any announcements by the commission? Any announcements?
I'm just going to give the citizens a second to leave, so it's a little quieter. Okay. That brings us to Section 4, announcements by commissioners and city staff. Do we still have content for our regular meeting? Or are we skipping that since we had our special meeting?
For the 26th, no, we are having a meeting.
We will?
We will be having a meeting on the 26th.
So, everyone, we still have a meeting on March 26th at 6:30, even though you came to this meeting. So, don't forget. Mr. Blackmore?
We got a funeral coming up. Ms. Pascal's father passed away.
Oh, no.
The other day. And funeral's coming up here pretty shortly. Just want to make that announcement. And one other thing, kind of has some bottled water back there in the back.
Yes, sir.
In the future. Appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
Well, my condolences to Ms. Pascal then. That stinks.
City council meeting is next Tuesday, the 19th, at 5:30.
And these will both be there?
Correct.
So, if you would like to be there, you may be there. But you may not speak on behalf of the zoning commission, only as a citizen. I will be there to speak on behalf of the zoning commission if the councilor should have any questions. That's my job.
Can we bring rocks and throw at the council?
Unfortunately, no, they will kick you out of the meeting.
No, too bad.
Any other announcements? No? Okay. Then that concludes our meeting, 9:30 on the news.